I'll introduce the board and the staff. On my far right is Mark Fineran, and then we have Scott Peterson. To my right is Frank Duffy, the clerk. My name is Suzanne Murphy. I'm chair. Next to me on my left is James Morse, vice chair, and then Tony Petucci, an associate, and Nick Haney, an associate. And then we have Noreen Stockman, our zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, an office assistant. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town's zoning bylaws in receiving and voting on every application. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants in the public and to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to the closing of the hearing and reaching a decision. Number one, to begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. Two, the applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation, but time may be extended by a vote of the board. Three, the board will then question the applicant. Four, the public will then be invited. Comments will be limited to two minutes and be strictly related to the proposal. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair and should come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, speak into the mic, and it will not amplify your voice and record audio for FCTV viewers. And we have a time before we start the hearings. If anyone wants to make a public comment on anything that's not on our agenda, you're welcome to come up. Any takers? All right, so we'll begin. Our first hearing is Lawrence Lynch Realty Corporation. We got a letter from them requesting a withdrawal, and I will need a motion from that.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to allow Lawrence Lynch Realty Corp. to withdraw their application without prejudice.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Anybody from the public? It's a withdrawal. We're all set? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay, our first hearing is 04125, 38 Drumlin Road in Falmouth.
This is Application 4125. That's an application of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 240 11.4A1, small letter i, of the Code of Falmouth, to repurpose the existing dwelling into a detached garage, habitable space above, and relocate the structure closer to the street, but more than 50, in the front yard, but more than 50 feet from the front property line. The property is located at 38 Drumlin Road in Falmouth. The zoning district is RA. The property is in the wildlife, it's in a wildlife corridor, but no other overlay districts that I observed. It's Zone X for flood zone. The lot is 93,246 square feet in a zoning district which currently requires a minimum of 40,000 square feet. The street frontage is 211.49 feet in a zoning district that currently requires 100 feet of frontage. Drumlin Road is a public right-of-way at this location. Lot coverage by structure existing, 1.9%. The proposal is to increase it to 5.0%, and the limit under the zoning bylaw is 20%. Lot coverage by structure parking and paving currently 2.3%. Proposal is to increase it to 5.3%. The limit under the zoning bylaw is 40%. There are no, no nonconformities noted on the property report. Engineering, for referrals, engineering has advised us that a driveway permit is necessary and that all stormwater should be contained on the site. Board of Health says they have no issues, but that the property is located in a nitrogen-sensitive area. Conservation has no comment. The water department notes that the detached dwelling may need an independent water service. Assessors have no comment. Fire, no comment. Building, no comment. And the planning board, no comment. There are no letters in support, no letters in opposition. That's it.
Point of clarification before you begin. It's not in a coastal pond overlay district?
It's not.
I had it as being in a wildlife corridor. Is it in a coastal pond overlay district?
No, it's not. I just, I misunderstood what you said. I'm sorry.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name's Kevin Clower. I am an attorney with Amen Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I'm before you tonight representing Greg and Pam Hinkle, the owners of 38 Drumlin Road. They're here with us tonight, as well as Chris Harris from Salt Architecture. The Hinkels are seeking permission effectively for an accessory structure to be located in the front yard. There's more to it than that, but I'll get there, but that's effectively what we're asking. 38 Drumlin Road is located on the westerly side of Palmer Avenue in the Cipewistet area of town. The lot's 93,248 square feet, so it's a little over two acres in the RA zoning district, and it's not within any overlays, so not a coastal pond overlay, not a water resource area, and not a nitrogen-sensitive area. Presently, there's a four-bedroom single-family dwelling, the total footprint of which is slightly under 2,000 square feet, so it's 1.9% lot coverage by structure as it stands today. That structure is entirely conforming to setback and lot coverage requirements. The bones of that structure are in pretty good shape, but it itself needs significant upgrades. The applicants purchased this property in 2023 and have long ties to Falmouth, including significant time at MBL, HOE, and Falmouth Academy. They've been working on plans and are intending to relocate and making this their primary residence. So, working with Salt Architecture and with the engineering team to finalize these plans were before you now. So the proposal is to repurpose the existing house, and the existing house is located effectively right here, which is hashed in. And they're going to repurpose that by moving it to the front of the lot and renovating it as a detached garage with habitable space above. There is a new primary dwelling that's going to be constructed, effectively in the same footprint of the current home with some additions. Under their proposal, the dwelling, garage, and pool will entirely conform to lot coverage and setbacks. The proposed lot coverage by structure will be only 5%, well below the 20% allowed by right. Theoretically, at 20% by right, they could go up to almost 19,000 square feet of lot coverage, which they're not asking to do, I want to make that very clear, but that's what the bylaw would theoretically allow. The garage is proposed to be located more than 50 feet from the front yard setback as required. It's 58 feet, 58.1 feet. The first floor, which would be a two-car garage with habitable space above, which would be one bedroom with a loft space. The proposed ridge height of that garage is 21 feet 4 inches, which is below the 22 feet that's allowed. We're not proposing this as a separate ADU. There are no cooking facilities proposed. It's not to be rented separately, and we welcome a condition for that effect. The plans specify no cooking facilities as well. The dwellings proposed is three bedrooms, which, again, the dwelling itself is entirely by right. The only aspect that requires a special permit of this project is the garage to be located in the front yard. And though they're expanding in size, the proposed lot coverage by structure, as I noted, is only 5%. Lot coverage by structure, paving, and parking likewise remains conforming at 5.3%, far under the 40% that is allowed by right. So, the special permit for an accessory structure in the front yard is under 240 11.4A1i. That section states that the board may allow for an accessory structure in the front yard provided no closer than 50 feet to the street. There's no other standards for consideration that's set forth in that provision, so we have to look at 240 12.1e, which governs generally all special permit decisions. The threshold of question there is, does the proposed use have adverse effects, that overbalance beneficial effects of the project to the neighborhood and town? And they set forth certain factors by which the board should consider that. In this case, the lot is more than adequate in size. This doesn't change the nature of the proposed use. It remains a single-family dwelling. It only increases the owner's utilization. There's no impact on traffic flow and safety, remaining as a single-family dwelling. It remains in line with neighborhood character and doesn't affect public services. Further, there's no existing nonconformities. There's no new nonconformities created. Proposal, again, is entirely conforming, meeting and exceeding all setback requirements on what is frankly an oversized lot. There's no increase in the number of bedrooms, and I believe that this meets all the requirements set forth in 240 11.4A1i and 240 12.1e. For those reasons, I would ask that this board grant the special permit, and I would of course be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
Mark, you want to start off?
Yeah, I don't really have much. I mean, they have a ton of land to do whatever they want. This is kind of fun, and they're, they're well within all the parameters, so, you know, God bless them.
Yeah, I mean, I think it, I think it looks more complicated than it is, because it boils down to can we have an accessory structure?
You haven't done it yet, though.
But it's, but it's fun. But it is fun. It's, we're moving, we're moving the structure and we're repurposing it and doing all these cool things.
And there's, all the ticks will be watching you anyway, but, no, I have no problem whatsoever.
Thank you. Just, again, looking at the application, there's the discussion that the current single-family dwelling has four bedrooms, and then it speaks to going to five bedrooms plus the one bedroom above the garage, so are we at six? Where you said there was no?
Stay with me one second.
Yes. And I was trying to see that as you're looking.
No, of course. So the actual application, so let's look. You count one in the law, you count one in the accessory.
Correct.
And then, I think when I was doing the application, I was counting the office as a bedroom, but that does have a case opening, so we have show one bedroom on the first floor. The office is under the 70 square feet on the, on the first floor, so that actually wouldn't count. And then, if you count the den, that's how you get to the bedroom count. What we're really proposing, though, is three bedrooms. Our septic will be designed to accommodate, let's see if I can find the flow notes.
Bedroom is for six bedrooms?
Yeah, they've designed it for six bedroom, but I think some of those rooms either don't count as bedrooms or aren't going to be used as bedrooms. The septic will be designed appropriately, and this lot has more than enough space to accommodate that.
I agree. I just wanted to clarify.
No, no, that's a fair question. Thank you.
And there is space for future IA?
Mm-hmm.
And going through, again, through the application, they said that their Board of Health, there was no application for the septic? Is that?
There, not as of yet.
Okay.
We typically get through this stage first to make sure we don't need to make any radical changes and then go to the Board of Health.
Okay, just, on the bedroom count things, I just want to make sure we're square. Thank you very much.
I'll second.
Mr. Clower, the, the new residence is, I understand, it's a by-right build. You don't need a special permit or any relief from us for this new residence. Okay. So I did a site visit, and this is a very interesting property. You really can't see it at all from the street. And this garage once moved, now I don't even know it's there, so I don't.
Can't see it from the air.
It's a fairly big garage, too.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be 21 feet, I think we said 21 feet.
So it's an accessory structure, so you're going to comply with the 22-foot limit of the?
Yeah, no, we're at 21 feet 4 inches.
Well, having said that, I have no further comments.
To piggyback on that, I think we should probably do a height certification on both, because they're, you know, pretty, pretty close. That's all I have. Jim?
Nice-looking project, Attorney Clower. So you have no, you have no objection if we put a condition, no cooking, accessory dwelling, no short-term rentals?
Perfect.
IA system, you guys see the reserve on the plans?
One request I'd make there, Mr. Morse, there's the same request we always make, which is not to be used as an accessory dwelling until and if they permit it as such.
Fair enough. No, I don't really have any. I do have one question, only because it was in big color on the packet. Is that going with you to the new?
I think we're taking the, you're taking the hoop?
Yes.
You can have that if you'd like.
No, thank you. I was amused just to see that in the submission. I have no questions, so I, thank you.
Tony?
All the questions have been asked. Just one quick question. The finished basement, align that, it's not going to be used as a bedroom, it's just going to be?
Not, not used as a bedroom, it's just, it's just an area, you know, it's finished basement. Rumpus room for the kids.
Okay.
Red?
All my questions were answered earlier.
Nick?
Nope. Cool project.
It's tough when you're down the end, everyone asks you questions. You guys all set for the public?
Yeah.
Anybody from the public want to comment on this? We got a shy group tonight. Anybody want to make a comment up here? Any other questions?
I did have one follow-up question. I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. Any opposition or in favor on the file?
None noted.
Thank you.
I'll move to close then, Madam Chairman.
I'll second that motion.
Motion to close. Any further discussion up here? All set? All those in favor of closing?
Aye.
Motion to approve with conditions?
Second.
The motion to approve with conditions.
Okay, for findings, with properties located at 38 Drumlin Road in Falmouth, the owner is Gregory and Pamela Hinkley. Zoning district is RA. The property is in the wildlife corridor, but no overlay district. Flood zone is X. The property, there's, there's no previous Zoning Board of Appeals decision of record for this property that I found. The current lot size is 93,246 square feet in a district that currently requires 40,000, so it's more than conforming. Street frontage is 211.49 feet in a district that currently requires 100 feet, so that's fine. Drumlin Road is a public right-of-way. Lot coverage by structure is currently 1.9%. It will increase to 5.0%, well within the limits of 20% as set forth in the bylaw. Lot coverage by structure parking and paving is 2.3%. It will increase to 5.3%, again, within the 40% limit of the zoning bylaw. The garage will be repositioned and moved into the front yard, although it will be 58 feet from the street, again, as permitted by the bylaw. Engineering comments, the driveway permit, stormwater runoff to be contained on the site. The Board of Health has no issues. We understand from the representation of the applicant that they will be applying for a permit for the septic system when they determine what size they need.
That's, yeah, that's perfectly fine.
Conservation has no comment. Water Department talks about having an independent water service, perhaps for each building because there's bedroom space in each. The assessors, fire, and building, and planning board all have no comment. We had no, no letters in support or no letters in opposition. We heard no comments at the public hearing. The garage will be one bedroom. There will be no cooking facilities in the garage, and the representation of the applicant is that it will not be an ADU or accessory dwelling unit. With respect to Section 240 11.4A1i of the zoning bylaw, Board of Appeals has the authority to issue a special permit for an accessory structure in the front yard, but no closer than 50 feet from the street frontage. This particular building will be located 58 feet, so it does conform to the requirements of the bylaw. The general requirement for a special permit is found in Section 240 12.1e of the zoning bylaw, where it will, we must determine, and so do so, that the proposed use will not have adverse effects on the, that overbalance beneficial effects on the neighborhood of the town. We find that the site is adequate for the proposed use. The site is suitable for the proposed use. There's no negative impact on traffic flow and safety. There's no negative impact on neighborhood visual character, views or vistas. There's adequate sewage disposal or adequate utilities, and this will not affect the supply of affordable housing.
Findings, nice job.
Can I add one?
Yep.
Testimony is that, we, standard Title V, plan submitted indicates there is a future IA reserve on the plan.
Space, yeah. So, conditions?
Well, the ADU must be permitted before it can be, it's not an ADU.
Not an ADU, no cooking, all boards?
Gain a driveway permit.
Driveway permit.
Did you get as-bills for height?
Yeah, as-bills for both buildings.
No, because they don't, we don't have jurisdiction over the other building.
Yeah, it's by right.
It's a by-right build.
But I thought it can't be more than 22?
No, the accessory. We, we're going on only the accessory.
Okay.
The house is all by right.
House is by right.
We don't have any.
But it's almost 35.
We don't have jurisdiction over it.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Street can fight that battle.
Okay, we'll let someone else fight the battle. We got that. All right, so all boards, that includes Board of Health, that he hasn't even gone to yet.
All right.
Driveway permit, health cert only on the garage, no cooking in the, in the garage. Construction hours, 7:00 AM, 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM, 4:00 PM, Saturdays. No construction on Sundays, the town observes holidays, absent an emergency. Any violation of work hour limitations reported to the ZBA may result in the applicant being recalled to a meeting of the ZBA. All construction vehicles and materials shall be located within the lot, not in the street. Dark sky compliant lighting, three years on this, on special permit. Anybody have any other conditions?
The assessors requested an inspection, should include that.
Yep. Did have that on my notes, too. Yep.
Do we comment on no short-term rentals condition?
Yeah. No short-term rentals.
Unless permitted.
Unless permitted, there you go. And it's, it's up to six bedrooms, right? With the system, so I was going to have the, the den widened, but I don't think I need to, right?
It was conditioned that, you know, must comply with Title V regulations.
Must comply with, with the Board of Health.
Yeah, it's a board health.
The Board of Health.
Yeah. Anybody have any other conditions?
Nope.
Think we're all set?
Yes.
All ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Good project. Like it. All right, next up, we have 83 Crystal Springs Ave. in North Falmouth.
This is Application 4425. It's an application to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 240 10.2A and 240 11.1, excuse me, 240 11.3A4 of the zoning bylaw to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming single-family dwelling, increasing lot coverage by structure. Property is located at 83 Crystal Springs Ave. in North Falmouth. Owner is Adam James Thorpe and Adrian Lynn Thorpe. Crystal Springs Ave., the property is in an RC zoning district. It is in the Wild Harbor Coastal Pond Overlay District. The existing dwelling is a three-bedroom, 1,270 square feet. The proposed dwelling is a single-family dwelling, three bedrooms, 1,292 square feet. We find no previously, previous Board of Appeals decisions unfilled for this property. The lot is 5,225 square feet in a zoning district which currently requires 40,000, so the lot is not, is undersized, but buildable. The street frontage is 55 feet in a zoning district which currently requires 100 feet. That's a nonconformity. Crystal Spring Ave. is a public right-of-way at this particular location. Lot coverage by structure is 24.3%, which exceeds the limits of the zoning bylaw. It's going to be increased to 24.7%. The limit is 20, but we are allowed to grant a special permit up to 25%. The average in the neighborhood per the worksheet submitted by the applicant is 19.43% for lot coverage by structure. Lot coverage by structure parking and paving is currently 39.5%. It will actually decrease, or proposed to decrease, to 38.8%. The limit is 40. There, there are several nonconformities noted with the existing structure. The easterly sideline is 9.3 feet, 10 feet is required. The westerly sideline setback is 8.5 feet, again, 10 feet is required. The height, the, the height of the existing building was not noted on the application, but the height of the proposed building is to be 31 feet, which is within the 35 feet allowed by the zoning bylaw. Engineering has commented that there shall be no stormwater runoff from the site onto budding property or public right-of-way. They suggest dry wells for roof runoff, and they ask that erosion and sediment controls be applied during construction. There's also a note that a hedge may be in the town right-of-way, and they either, must be either removed or licensed by the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Health has advised us that the property may need an IA system in the future as this is a nitrogen-sensitive area. Conservation has no comment. The assessors have no comment. The planning board has no comment. The water department suggests that one-inch service be applied with the meter in the house, not in a crawl pit. And also, the building commissioner has noted that the plans submitted do not show front or rear steps to get in this house, and that may affect lot coverage by structure, and we'll ask the applicant to address that during his presentation. We find no letters in, in support or in opposition, and that's it.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Kevin Clower. I am representing Adam and Adrian Thorpe, the owners of 83 Crystal Springs Ave. in North Falmouth. I'm joined tonight by Ken Koska, who is the builder for this project. The Thorpes are seeking permission to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming dwelling. Before I start, I do just want to note that we did submit revised plans, but we go last Thursday, noting a few things. The hedge road will be removed, including the stairs, front and rear stairs, updating the lot coverages, and including roof recharge area as well. So those were submitted last week to the board.
May I interrupt you for a second?
You, Madam Chairman.
These are the plans stated 7/23 of 25?
Correct.
Those are the ones that everyone was given tonight?
Yep. Thank you. So, just noted that, that, those were done to address the comments of engineering and the building department. So, this property, 83 Crystal Springs Ave., is located basically in the center of the new Silver Beach area. It is, as this board knows, a very dense, largely seasonal neighborhood. Lots 5,225 square feet, which is actually typical for the area. It is in the RC zoning district. It's not located in the flood zone. It is within a nitrogen-sensitive area and the Wild Harbor Coastal Pond Overlay. So presently, we have a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling with a detached garage, total footprint of 1,270 square feet, which is 24.3% lot coverage by structure. The existing dwelling is nonconforming, it's nonconforming to side yard setback to the west, being 8.5 feet where 10 is required, side yard setback to the east being 9.3 where 10 is required. The garage is nonconforming to setbacks, east side being .5 where 10 is required, and the rear yard being 5.1 where 10 is required. And generally speaking, the lot coverage is 24.3%, again, where 20% is allowed by right and up to 25 by special permit. There are no changes proposed to the garage, just to be noted. The applicants have owned this since 2017. They have a young family, and they're finding that they need more room for space. The house needs significant repair, cosmetically and structurally, so given the scope of their desired renovation, it's most prudent to, to raise and rebuild this. The applicant's proposal does not affect the garage, as I mentioned. The changes to the house will eliminate the nonconforming setbacks. Side yard setback to the west will increase to 10.5. Side yard setback to the east will increase to 10.5 as well. The lot coverage by structure will be slightly increased by 23 square feet, up to 1,293 square feet, which is 24.7% lot coverage. However, that can, can be allowed by this board by special permit, and with the issuance of a special permit, will eliminate that as a nonconformity as well. The proposed ridge height here is 31 feet, which is below the 35 feet as allowed. Due to the existing nonconformities, this does require a special permit pursuant to 240 10.2A. Under that provision, pre-existing nonconforming structures may be changed by special permit provided they're not detrimentally, more, provided they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. The board is asked to consider the standard of 240 12.1e and whether or not the alteration creates any new dimensional nonconformities, imperious uses of vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. In this case, there are no new nonconformities created. The number of the existing nonconformities are approved or eliminated, as I mentioned, so that includes the lot coverage by setback and eliminating the side yard setback, nonconformities to the east and west. This is consistent with the neighborhood, as we will elaborate. Under 240 11.3A4, lot coverage by structure is 24.3%, which exceeds the limits of the Under two forty eleven point three A four, lot coverage by structure above twenty percent may be allowed by special permit, and you're asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the neighborhood, the effects of shadow, the impacts of views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen and coastal abeyments. In this case, there should be no impact of views and vistas from public ways. This is a dense residential neighborhood and will remain that. Though the building is larger, it is in an area of many similarly sized structure. There is a limited effect of nitrogen and coastal abeyments, if not an outright improvement, for maintaining three bedrooms, the same at present, and we're installing a new denatification system, which is noted on the plans. As to the size and fit with the neighborhood, we submitted a lot comparison worksheet for nearby properties, looking at forty houses within a three-hundred-foot radius. As proposed, this is below the average footprint and not out of character in terms of gross floor, with the number of homes being larger. It's very similar in size to a number of homes that are permitted by this Board and constructed within the last few years within this neighborhood. The Thorpe's proposal represents a significant improvement over the existing conditions of the applicant. The existing non-conformities are either improved or eliminated, and there's no new dimensional non-conformities. There are no adverse effects that overbalance the benefits that are being outlined. In short, there's nothing about this proposal substantially more detrimental than the existing structure. This meets the requirements of two forty ten point two A, two forty eleven point three A four, and two forty eleven point, I'm sorry, twelve point one E. I would ask that the Board grant the special permit, but would be glad to address any questions that you may have at this time.
Let's start down this end today, shake it up.
No, I like, fits what's going on in the neighborhood. Seen a lot of these in there, so.
Yep.
Think it's gonna be a good fit in there. Looks good, good project.
Tony?
Neighborhood's in transition, this fits well. I think the sidelines are, they're conforming, but may want to have an as-built on the sidelines.
No objection to that.
I am a little confused. I thought I understood the site plan of six-two. And now we have revised to seven twenty-three, which is fine. But, is this an IA system?
So, you'll note, it says, SEPTI-Tech model, S.T.A.A.R. point five, or approved denatification IA system.
I knew the microfast to be a IA system, but I don't know this one. Is this an IA system?
This is an IA system.
This is what?
It says, "or approved denatification system."
So, I just want to confirm it. This is an IA system?
Yes, it is.
Congratulations, thank you very much.
You're welcome, least we can do.
So, no more questions?
Two.
No, the revised plans addressing the steps today, very helpful, and, yeah. The only thing I could possibly, given the nitrogen issue in the neighborhood, but you've addressed that with the IA system, so no, thank you.
Are the changes for the steps added into the stats for the coverage?
They are.
There, okay, that's all I have.
Well, that leads into my question, because I have not seen this revised plan that you referred to. So what is going to be the final lot coverage by structure?
We have the final lot coverage by structure at twenty-four point seven percent.
It doesn't change?
No, it's, there was some, I talked about this. The granite steps aren't, are considered lot coverage by structure, paving and parking, but not structure.
Alright.
And I went through that with the building commissioner.
What is the lot, what is the final lot coverage by structure, parking and paving?
Thirty-eight point eight.
Thirty-eight point eight, okay.
Madam Chair? Quick follow-up, I'm sorry, Mr. Duffy, you done? I interrupted Mr. Duffy. I just want to go back for a second about coverage here, because I just heard something about a granite step. And that's not being counted, you talked?
Granite steps are not counted as part of lot coverage by structure. They are counted as part of lot coverage by structure, paving and parking, because they're not attached to the home, so they're not part of the structure of the home. I did confer with Gary Street, the building commissioner, about this, and that was his email to me.
But, but it's a landscape feature, granite steps are more of a landscape feature, though.
Yes, which is why they're not counted towards.
So you're not counting it for the house? But part of the code is, you've got to be able to get into the house. Without that granite, you couldn't get into the house.
No.
So it's actually, it's part of the house.
So I understand what you're saying, but it's similar to a patio, where a patio doesn't count towards structure, but it does count.
No, but a patio, I'm sorry, I apologize, I apologize, you finish.
No, so, I reached out to Gary about this specifically to confirm, because I've heard, you know, this has gone kind of both ways over the years. And, his email to me said that a granite step would count towards lot coverage by structure, paving and parking, but not toward lot coverage by structures.
Madam Chair?
It is, may, let me just, let me just come back at this for a second. Mr. Duffy, let me just say. The building code, you are required to have a step there. You could not enter that house without the step. It's very different than a patio, alright? If a patio were, if the step up were greater than, I think it's eight inches, I've forgotten what the code is, you'd have to put a step there on the patio. You couldn't get into the front door without this granite step, so therefore, it's an integral part of the building itself, and therefore counts towards a part of the building. I know you've talked to Gary.
Chair, can I make a point here?
Let me make, go ahead.
It's really much of a muchness, because if you do the math, they have another fifty point one one eight square feet, and none of this is gonna get anywhere near that, so whether you count them as part of the structure or not, it's still within the twenty-five percent.
Madam Chair, through you, it's not the point. The point is, we keep going back and forth about these things. If it's something that is required by building code to get into the house, it has to be there, if it's not there, you don't get an occupancy permit. And I know you spoke to the building commissioner, and I'm a little dumbfounded by this, because the building code requires a step to get in. So it has to be part of the house.
So respectfully, sir, I would just say, wouldn't the building commissioner's determination be probative on that, though? Wouldn't that be the building commissioner's decision to make?
If I understood, probative, I would either agree or disagree with you.
Wouldn't that be effectively, wouldn't he be the decision-maker on that?
At this step, I believe, well, I'm gonna have to turn that over to the Chair, but I believe, I'm really bothered by this back and forth we do on this. If it is integral to the house, in other words, without that granite step, you could not get a build, an occupancy permit. So I argue that it's part of the house, without which, it just couldn't get in.
So, what I would suggest, Mr. Petrucci?
But it's still under the twenty-five, so it's kind of a...
I'm trying to, Madam Chair?
An argument we should be litigating now.
Madam Chair, I'm trying to settle this, because we have a lot of attorneys who come here and say, "Well, we have precedent," and the building commissioner says, and I absolutely agree, the building commissioner needs to weigh in on this. However, if it's part of the building code, that the height of that, something is required, a step of some kind to get into the house. Without that step, you can't get in the house, you don't get an occupancy permit. Alright, so, whether it counts, how much it counts towards the coverage doesn't matter. It's the fact that it's an integral part of the house. So even if it falls under the twenty-five percent, as Mr. Finnern is saying, I want it counted as the integral part of the house. I want it counted as the coverage. That doesn't mean I'm gonna get this, you know that, Mr. Clower.
So, it's not connected to the house either, which is also a metric.
This, Madam Chairman, is, I think, we've wrestled with this issue on previous occasions, and I think we've had different interpretations of it. If the Board is gonna make a substantial deviation of how it's gonna be interpreted, it needs to be done, I think, with notice to the public, with input from the building commissioner. I would accept Mr. Clower's representation as to what Mr. Street told him. I would, in the future, just ask, submit the email, just so we have something for the record. I will accept your representation as attorney, that that's what he said, but given if that's, given that's the representation, I think it's under the numbers, and I think we need to proceed tonight.
I agree with that, I just want to make sure it's understood as an integral part of the building.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
Especially in cases where we're right at the absolute maximum for coverage, lot coverage or structure coverage.
I think we can put that on for a future agenda item, and you can just incorporate it within your board rules, that that's your intent.
Yeah.
And I am happy to forward that email, just for the record.
Okay.
We have a workshop in October.
Oh, good, that's when we'll do it. Frank, do you have any questions on the project?
Yes, I do, one more. I just want to confirm, Mr. Clower, that one of the conditions we have to look at under Section two forty eleven point three A four is the effect of coastal abeyments, effective nitrogen on coastal abeyments, and your testimony is you have the same number of bedrooms, not increased in the number of bedrooms, and there will be an IA system, and that's your testimony on that point.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Scott?
Thank you for the IA system, appreciate that. I would agree with Tony that, you know, but we'll hash that out with Gary and others to come to a head, but if you had had those as wooden steps, it would have counted, and to say that it's a landscape component, I struggle with, but we'll beat that up with the building commissioner.
So, so much of what we do, for better or worse, is semantics.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's a bedroom, it's not a bedroom, it's a step, it's not a step, it's not counted, it is counted. Fortunately, that's what the bylaw is, and that's why I have a job. Because we're finding those gray areas. But, you know, I think that there, I would love for there to be some clarity on this, generally speaking, because I don't relish...
Come on, you don't.
Well, on this particular question, I do. On this question, I do.
Yeah, because we bump into it on frontage, too.
Yeah, no, I understand.
It'd be nice to, to your point, to put it, but, thank you, nice project, appreciate it.
This place is screaming to be torn down. I'm quite familiar with the neighborhood. Surprised you didn't mention.
It's a lovely area of town.
Perhaps, yeah. No, I have no problems with it. Like I said, there's fifty feet to play with, so this isn't the place to litigate the steps. But, I mean, I believe that it's always been done, the way you've related to us, and Scott, I believe, was correct in his assessment.
Time for the public.
They all set up here?
Yeah.
You guys all set? Anybody from the public want to comment on this project? Come on!
No, I'm okay with not being the main event.
I feel left out.
This time, it's coming.
I motion we close?
I'll second.
We have a motion to close in a second, everybody all set up here? Any other further discussion? All those in favor of closing? Aye. Opposed, none.
Motion to approve with conditions.
Second.
We have a motion to approve.
Okay, the property is at Chris, eighty-three Crystal Springs Ave. in the new Silver Beach area of North Falmouth. The zoning district is RC. The property is in the Wild Harbor Coastal Pond Overlay District. No flood zone issues, no previous decisions of the Board of Appeals. The lot size is five thousand two hundred and twenty-five square feet in a zoning district that currently requires a minimum of forty thousand square feet. Street frontage is fifty-five feet in a zoning district that currently requires a minimum of one hundred feet. Crystal Springs Ave. is a public right-of-way at this particular location. The existing lot coverage by structure is twenty-four point three percent, and will be increased to twenty-four point seven percent. The limit is twenty percent, however, we are allowed to increase lot coverage by structure to a maximum of twenty-five percent under Section two forty eleven point three A four of the zoning bylaw, and there are conditions that, provisions that we must address, which I will do so in a minute. The average in the district, by the way, is nineteen point four-three percent. Lot coverage by structure, parking and paving, is presently thirty-nine point five percent. The proposal, proposed project will finish at thirty-eight point eight percent. The limit is forty percent, so that's within the bylaw. There are two noted non-conformities to the existing structure, which will be raised. That is, that the easterly sideline is nine point three, and the westerly sideline is eight point five. The requirement is ten. That will be corrected, they will both be at ten point five. The proposed structure will be thirty-one point feet high. The limit under the zoning bylaw is thirty-five, so it will be within the limits of the bylaw. There are engineering comment, we had no stormwater runoff, that dry wells be considered to take care of roof runoff, that erosion and sediment control measures be taken during construction, and that the hedge be either eliminated or applied for a permit. And we note that Mr. Clower has said, he submitted a revised plan showing the hedge has been removed, or will be removed. Okay. The Board of Health talked about an IA system being required in the future, but the most recent testimony is that an IA system will be provided. The Conservation Commission had no comment. The Water Service, the Water Department suggested, requests that the service be increased to one inch, and that the meter be located in the home. Assessors have no comment, planning board have no comment. And the building commissioners' comment about front and rear steps and the effect on lot coverage has been addressed by Mr. Clower during testimony, and by, also by a revised plan that was submitted showing them. There are no letters in opposition, no letters in support, no public comment.
Comp sheet.
Yeah, the comp sheet, nineteen point four-three percent. The proposed structure will eliminate the side yard, non-conforming setbacks. We note that there is a garage on the property. The garage will remain, and it is a non-conforming garage, but it will remain as is without change. Under Section ten, two forty, ten point two A, non-conforming structures, the change shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure, and we so find. And, we note that the proposed structure will actually lessen non-conformities. Under Section two forty eleven point three A four, in a, in an RC district, the zoning Board of Appeals may grant a special permit to exceed twenty percent lot coverage by structure to a maximum of twenty-five percent. We are to consider the size and height of structure relative to the neighborhood average, and we determine that it is when it is acceptable. There are no, there's testimony that there's no negative impact on shadows on adjacent property. There's apparently no impact on views from, and vistas from public ways, and the, we must determine that there will be no negative effect, excuse me, no effect on nitrogen and coastal abeyments, and we make this determination based upon the representation that there'll be the same number of bedrooms, and an IA system will be installed on the property with the new construction. Under Section two forty twelve point one E, for special permit, we make the finding that the proposed use will not be, will not have adverse effects that overbalance its beneficial effects on the neighborhood. We find that the site is adequate for the proposed use, the site is suitable for the proposed use, there are no negative impacts on traffic flow and safety, there are no negative impacts on neighborhood visual character, views or vistas, is adequate sewage disposal, is adequate utilities, and there's no negative impact on the supply of affordable housing.
The pre-existing non-conformities to lot coverage will be brought into compliance with the zoning bylaw by virtue of the special permit, eliminating it.
Alright, conditions. We'll do standard conditions per plans, all boards. Department required, requirements. Construction hours, seven through seven, Monday through Friday, eight through four on Saturdays. No construction on Sunday or town holidays, absent an emergency. Any violation of work hour limitations reported to the ZBA may result in the applicant being recalled. All construction vehicles and materials shall be located within the lot, not on the street, and if that is an issue, they will contact the police, and... Help, whatever help they need. Dark sky compliant lighting. No further buildings on this lot, I would think. Since we can't even have an extra stair.
No playhouses.
Yeah. There will be an IA, the hedge will be, is proposed to be removed. We're gonna ask for an as-built on the sidelines, didn't someone?
Yes, that's what I suggest.
As-built on the sidelines, garage to remain the same. Anybody else have any further?
Any encroachment into the town's right-of-way must either be licensed or removed.
Yeah, they have a note on their file that they're gonna remove the hedge.
They want to keep it, just get permission from the Selectmen.
Yeah, still keeping it. Do you have any other further ones, Mary?
Just that the office remain as a case opening.
Everybody all set?
Good.
Any other further ones? Okay, we're all ready to vote, I guess, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate your time this evening, and best of luck with the rest of it.
Thank you. Alright, next up at bat, we have an appeal of the building commissioner on one-six-three Bay Road.
This is application thirty-six twenty-five. It's been filed on behalf of James S. Mamory, trustee. It's an appeal filed with the town clerk pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Sections eight and fifteen, and Sections two forty twelve point four A, two forty two point one C, and two forty six point six of the zoning bylaw, appealing the building commissioner's determination denying a request for zoning enforcement. The subject property is one sixty-three Bay Road. The subject property is 163 Bay Road in North Falmouth. This relates to an aquaculture license and related activity conducted on the property and elsewhere. The zoning, go ahead, you have a...
I just want, go ahead, you finish. Go ahead.
The zoning district is RB. The decision of the building commissioner says that he basically observed no zoning violations at the property.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. What you just read, this, can you just go back a paragraph and read again? This applies to, this complaint applies to what?
Aquaculture?
On the property and elsewhere. I, I don't believe it applies to the "and" elsewhere, but you just read.
Well, the aquaculture license applies to a variety of properties, but it's this property, 163...
This property, yeah. The elsewhere doesn't...
Right, we're not, we're not concerned with the aquaculture license elsewhere.
No, but what you read intimated that that was the case.
I didn't mean to...
We're not.
I didn't mean to suggest that. This is limited to 163 Bay Road, North Falmouth. The property is in an RB zoning district. There's no noted overlay district. We don't have an application unfilled, and a lot of the information that is usually provided with applications is not present here. The, we do know, however, that the lot is 35,543 square feet in a zoning district that currently requires 40,000 square feet. That Bay Road extension at this point is a private right-of-way. There is existing on 163 Bay Road extension, a single-family dwelling. We have a Conservation Commission issued an order of condition for the proposed use in November of 2020, they issued a superseding order of condition in March of 2022. The Board of Selectmen issued an aquaculture license in June of 2024. The building commissioner's denial it's being appealed is dated April 7, 2025. And we have a note from the Water Department that the waters, water, any pipes providing water for the residents must be separated from any pipes providing water for any commercial activity, so there's no cross-connection. And that's it.
One letter of support?
Excuse me, we got one letter of support.
Yes. Before you begin, I just want to set the record straight, that this is an appeal of the building commissioner. So the scope is going to be very limited to the appeal of the building commissioner for the public's knowledge. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission, good evening. My name is Brian Wall, I represent the petitioner in this case, who is James Mamory, and I've put up an aerial photo of the area. Mr. Mamory owns this piece of property here at the end of this point at 42 Brainerd Road, and the property that this appeal is about is here at 163 Bay Road. As the notice of the hearing was read, this is an appeal of a decision by the building commissioner. My client did request zoning enforcement, and the, the building inspector decided not to do that. At issue in this case is whether or not the owner of 163 Bay Road, a man named Scott Tynell, can use his residential property as a base of operations for a commercial aquaculture operation, and my client is focused on that. I want to be clear that my client is not opposed to Mr. Tynell conducting aquaculture. I'm going to describe the operation a little bit. It's solely focused on use of his residential property in this particular case. So as Mr. Duffy pointed out, this is an appeal, it's not an application, so the information is somewhat limited. But Mr. Tynell has actually been in the permitting pipeline for quite a while, again, as Mr. Duffy read. Several years ago, I think it was even pre-COVID, Mr. Tynell obtained what's called an aquaculture license, or sometimes called a grant, under the statutes of Massachusetts, to be able to use a certain area of water offshore. And I have a site map here to show you. I'm not as good as Mr. Clower is with this thing. In any event, you can see, this is Mr. Tynell's site map, and his parcel is outlined here in red, and he has obtained a license to use this 5.9 acre area of offshore water. And what that license does is it gives him exclusive rights to raise shellfish in that particular area as opposed to the public. He also obtained a wetlands permit. He also has obtained a permit from the Federal Army Corps of Engineers, which oversees navigation issues, and he has, I think, obtained what's called a shellfish propagation permit. So there's many permits needed to conduct an aquaculture operation. But what we're here tonight to talk about is zoning, and so I'd like to just briefly describe what we've been able to learn from these permit applications. So I don't represent that this is exactly what the project is, because again, I don't represent the applicant, but I've read all these permit applications and gathered information. And so what Mr. Tynell intends to do, I have a lot to cover, so I came with some information. Going to follow along with this. What he intends to do is, onshore, on his property, he intends to install, and we believe he has installed, a piece of equipment called an upweller. And inside that upweller, what he will do, will put small shellfish called seed, they're tiny little shellfish that will go into that device, and they'll float around and grow to a certain size, at which time, he then will take the seed out of that upweller, and he intends to have what's called a nursery next to his commercial, I'm sorry, his recreational pier. So he has a dock that extends into the waters of Rans Canal. And around the dock, he intends to tether these bags on anchors and chains, and he intends to grow the seed to a larger level. And then when that seed is grown from there, he intends to transport it to that offshore area, and then have the shellfish grow out there until they reach market size, which takes about three years approximately. When the seed is transferred, the aquaculture operation that he has proposed is shown on his site plan, and he's described it, and he says that it will have 2,400 total cages in this 5.9 acre area. And Google's a wonderful thing, I don't, I'm not an aquaculturist, but I went online and I looked at it, and what it says is that an average aquaculture cage will hold approximately 500 to 1,000 shellfish, depending on their size. Obviously, smaller ones, they'll be more in there, the larger they get, the less. So what that means is that this 5.9 acre grant area will have the capacity to grow somewhere between 1.2 and 2.4 million shellfish in that area. Obviously, that area will be accessed, we believe, from Mr. Tynell's property by boat, he'll go back and forth. And the point of me going through all of this is to show you that this is an intensive commercial operation at an industrial scale. Again, just doing a little bit of math, these cages need maintenance, the shellfish have to be put in and out of them, they have to be moved around, they have to be rotated, the bags get what's called fowling, they get growth from the ocean, and they have to be scrubbed off. So again, I just did some minor math, and if, if there's 10 minutes of maintenance per cage per month, that's 500 hours a month, which is equivalent to two people working eight hours a day, seven days a week. My point is, this is not just a little garden in your backyard or growing clams for dinner, this is a commercial operation. It will, it will involve boats, it will involve men, it will involve...
Minor orders, sorry.
Our review of this is limited to the activities at 163 Bay Road Extension.
Exactly.
This is all extraneous and esoteric, it has nothing to do with what's in front of us. We have a very limited scope to apply here.
Okay, good.
And, and it's, you're going beyond it.
I would respectfully disagree, because our contention is, is that it's the property that is going to be used as the base of operations for this operation. I agree with you that we're not challenging...
And we're, and our scope is exactly limited to that property, it has nothing to do what goes on with, out in the canal.
So, Mr. Fineran, that's a perfect segue to what I'm about to talk about. I decided to go on a field trip and see what an aquaculture operation, as in the base of operations, involves, and I found one in Dennis, it's called Black Rock Oysters, and I went there the other night and took a few photos. And this particular operation has a grant out in Cape Cod Bay that's very similar to the grant that Mr. Tynell is going to have in Reganza Harbor. And here are a few photos of what goes on at the site. There's a truck with a refrigeration unit that actually was running the entire time I was taking pictures. There's industrial storage containers, there's equipment...
Attorney Wall, we don't need to know what's going on in Dennis. Our, our building commissioner did not go to Dennis and make a ruling down there.
Again, the point is to show you...
We're at 163.
Okay, well, the, our contention is, is that this is what's going to be going on at 163.
You don't know that.
I don't, but it's been out there, Mr. Tynell's represented by counsel, I've never been told otherwise that it's not going to be the base of operations.
We're at 163 in Falmouth, Mass.
Okay, so I will move on to my legal arguments. So, again, trying to keep this simple, there's a lot of legal issues here, but I tried to put it down into some bullet points so that we can understand easily. So the first argument that we'd like to make is that Falmouth has a bylaw, section 240-14.8, which protects and conserves wetlands, and that specific language in A2 requires a special permit for obstructing, filling, dredging, excavating, or changing the course of any stream or tidal water. And the town has traditionally interpreted that to require a special permit for things like docks, ramps, floats, et cetera.
Isn't that the purview of the Selectmen and the Conservation Commission, though?
Well, it's, it's a zoning bylaw, so as, it, what a Selectmen is the permit issuing authority, but with regard to enforcement, it's appropriate to bring up here. And so we would suggest to you that under the traditional interpretation that this town has applied to this section, a special permit is required, and Mr. Tynell does not have one. Moving on to the aquaculture...
That special permit would be granted by the Conservation Commission?
No, by the Board of Selectmen as the zoning special permit granting authority. So it is a zoning issue, this board has authority to determine that such a permit is required, and if this board so determines, then it would go to the Board of Selectmen. My second argument is, is that under your bylaw in the use table, agriculture, which includes aquaculture in its definition, is allowed in the Residence B district as of right as a principal use. But this particular property is already principally used for a residence, and one can't have two principal uses on one lot, and therefore, aquaculture is not allowed by right as a principal use. It's also, in our contention, not allowed as an accessory use, and this gets to why I was describing the project.
So, can, let me, so are you saying that somebody in this town, which is a by-right farming town, it seems like you're saying that someone who has a farm can farm it, but they can't live on that property?
That's exactly, yeah, that's exactly what we're saying.
Well, that premise is blown up all over town, then.
If I may, Mr. Fineran, I, I, you're skipping ahead to something I wanted to say later. The building commissioner's letter to the board talks about Falmouth being a farm-by-right town, but you have to read what that means, and what that bylaw means is that a farm is immunized from nuisance types of claims, about like hours of operation, or odors, or dust, or things like that. It does not exempt it from zoning. You still have to go through the proper zoning procedures, and otherwise, why would it be in your zoning bylaw at all? And so again, our contention is, is there's a principal residence on the property, it can't also be principally used as an aquaculture operation.
Again, back to my question, that would apply to every farm in this town, then? So every farm in this town is illegal as well, according to your contention?
I, I would not agree with such a sweeping, I think you have to look at it at a case-by-case basis.
People live in their farms, I mean, it's, it's what you've suggested.
So for example...
Let's let him finish, okay?
I have to follow the...
By way of example, the state statute exempts farming from zoning on parcels five acres or larger. And so when you say every farm in town, if there is a person that has a house and their farm is 10 acres, that would be perfectly okay. What we're talking about here is a three-quarter of an acre parcel with a house and a dock, and it can't be used, in our opinion, principally for aquaculture. It also cannot be used as an accessory use, because an accessory use is defined as incidental and customary to the primary use, the primary use being residential. We can't have an aquaculture operation that can raise 2 million shellfish as being accessory to a home. It also can't be a home occupation, because that uses the same language about clearly incidental and subordinate to the principal residential use. And you also have a home-based business provision, but it delineates certain businesses that are allowed, and this is not one of them. So this, under this point heading, what I'm trying to demonstrate is, aquaculture is not allowed under your bylaw on this size of a parcel under these circumstances. There's also an argument that the operation is not allowed because it doesn't meet the state exemption. So as I mentioned, 163 Bay Road is .816 acres in size, and in your definitions of agriculture and farming, it says that it's allowed as of right, but if you're raising livestock, you have to have five acres or more. And our contention is, is that shellfish are living animals, they're not plants, and therefore, they're livestock by definition, and hence, you have to have five acres in order to conduct an aquaculture operation in a residential area. Finally, there's also some language in your bylaw that says a farm can consist of separate parcels of land. And if you read the papers, we make one contention about this, and my brother counsel, Adam Brodsky, will stand up and talk for Mr. Tynell. Our contention is, is that when you read that sentence, it says, land divided by a water can be made into one parcel. So in other words, I think what Mr. Tynell is going to argue, he can take his .816 acres and then add the 5.9 acres that are out in the water, and says, say that he has five acres in size. But again, it talks about land divided by water, not land and water, because all that's out offshore is, is water. And so for all those reasons, we would respectfully submit to you that this cannot happen in a residential area. He can get a property, like I was showing the board, he can go rent a metal building like Black Rock Oysters did, and he can conduct his operations somewhere inland and get to his operation offshore by boat. But he can't use his residential property as the base of operations, as essentially a contractor's yard for aquaculture. And those are our contentions to you.
Okay, thank you. We'll start down this end.
I'm all right right now.
You all set?
So, I came in here believing that, I came in here believing that 40, Section 3 ruled on this, but missed the five-acre part, which is where I want to go next. I think I just heard you say that the, what is in the ocean cannot be added to the land.
Right.
But isn't there a statute that goes back to, I think it's 1645, that allows, it was set up for promoting fishing and docks and all that, that says that for 550 yards out into the ocean, they used rods in those days, that all of that land under the ocean belongs to the landowner?
What it says, actually, is that the upland owner owns to the low watermark, or 1,650 rods, whichever is less. And so the low watermark in front of Mr. Tynell's property is right offshore. He, he does not own the land under the water out in Reganza Harbor.
So the low watermark is just, so, let me make, because I don't understand that precisely, the low watermark, it has to be low tide where it goes out to median low tide? And that's all been measured at this point in time?
We haven't decided that issue, whether it's median or extreme low, but the point is if you own upland water, upland property that's on tidal water, you own the intertidal zone to the low watermark, but not more than 1,650 yards. So out in the Cape Cod Bay, for example, the tide goes out extensively beyond that point, but I'm not sure exactly what your point is.
I'm trying to see if you can add that land under the water to...
Oh, well, that, that would be up to Mr. Tynell, but his property is .8 of an acre, so he would have to add 4.2 acres.
So, so let me ask this question, so, under what right does this town have to issue that license if it's not through Chapter 48, Section 3?
Which license?
The shellfishing license. The shellfishing license.
The granted?
They always start, they always start farming license.
The one that gives him the right to use that water?
Yeah.
So, there's a state statute, it's Chapter 130, Section 57 to, I think, 68. And it's the Marine Fisheries Statute. And that state statute says that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which controls the waters beyond low watermark, gives to the selectmen the right to give to an individual the right to exclusively plant, grow, and take shellfish. The waters do not become the shellfish operator's property, he just gets the right to fish in there exclusively.
So, I don't see how he has a right to use his property as his place of business under the statute.
I agree. That statute that gives him that grant out in the water does not affect his upland property.
I'm just one, I'm just not, I'm just, I'm just one, I'm one member, and I'm not even voting tonight. So, the bottom line is this, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get to an understanding here. If the statute requires five acres, 48, Section 3, and you have less than one acre, theoretically, he can't use that land.
Not for-
He has to go build something like that, bring a boat in, and do whatever he does for his oysters.
That is exactly our point, in the sense that, as I said at the outset, my client is not trying to tell Mr. Tyneal he can't conduct aquaculture. He can do it. And this Black Rock is a point, their grant is two miles away from their operation, but they go and they, they maintain and operate their grant, they harvest, and then they do all the base of operations in an industrial commercial zone that's zoned for that.
Well, there are people on this board far more learned than I am in these matters, and I'm sure they're going to speak soon. But if 48, Section 3 is driving this, and you need five acres, he doesn't have five acres, and therefore can't use his land to conduct his business, you can't have two principal uses, I just, I have to agree with you, but we have a whole board here that's going to have to weigh in on this.
Jim?
Just want to make sure I'm following. 150-some odd pages in the submission, I've read everything going back to, I believe, 2020. So, your position this evening is that 40A3, the agricultural exemption, does not apply because he does not have five acres of land.
Five acres of contiguous land, yeah. Or even land separated by a body of water.
Sure. I mean, I've read most of the cases that were cited in the various memorandums. What's kind of reoccurring is clearly is that it's a broad interpretation of 48, Section 3. Can you just get, try to get, I'm just trying to get my head around this a little bit more based on Mr. Street's argument.
So, Mr. Street really focused a lot on the right-to-farm statute. And again, I think he's kind of misapprehending what that means is, so if you have a farm and you're conducting it with, on Sundays or at night, because that's when you have to do something, they can't call the police or the building commissioner and say, there's a noise violation, or there's a sound violation, I mean, a smoke or fumes violation, because that's what the right-to-farm statute protects. It says farms have certain attributes that can't necessarily be controlled, and we're going to immunize farms from those. But it does not immunize farms from compliance with zoning.
The basis of the request for the enforcement, it's your position that there is a machine that is putting seed shellfish into bags that are then being brought into Rance Canal, and then they're later being brought out into Maggansett Harbor?
Yes. And if I could address that, I think what you're trying to say, too, is, because I think if you look at Mr. Street's letter, one of the things he was saying was, I don't find a violation.
That was going to be the next question. There's been several requests for enforcement, and each time it comes back, no violation. So, I just want to make sure the record is clear that this, we're not proceeding on appeal based on speculation, that there is something that was not actually enforced.
Right. So, by way of history, and it's being pointed out by Mr. Tyneal's counsel, that there are all these letters, as in, like, my client's been this complaining person. But there's actually another interpretation to it. We're trying to let our position be known to Mr. Tyneal before he invests all kinds of money and then says, oh, I'm already here. So, Mr. Street has been saying, there's no violation, there's no violation. He said, wait till you see some more activity. And so, if you look at the papers very closely, Mr. Tyneal has recently installed commercial-grade electricity to the front part of his property. We believe he has installed-
How do you define commercial-grade electricity?
Um, there's some pictures attached to my letter that show-
220?
I didn't go on the property. I don't know, Mr. Finneran, but it's a, if you, I can-
Sir, sir, through the chair, please.
What I can tell you, Mr. Finneran, is that they had lines trench, they installed some, I'm going to call it, from a layman's perspective, robust electric meters there. They installed the upweller. So, my point is, is that Mr. Tyneal is taking steps in furtherance of his permits. And we also know by inference what he intends to do. And again, we're trying to put ourselves out there, not waiting for a gotcha moment to say, aha, we waited until you put $100,000 into this, and now we're going to tell you you don't comply with zoning. So, we're trying to be upfront about this. And we think that there's enough activity on the property for there to be jurisdiction. And when you put that together with the permit applications, you know, we know what's coming.
Madam Chair, may I do a follow-up on this real fast? When you look at Mr. Street's letter, I'm trying to find this, here it is here, what he says, I want to make sure that we're clear about this. He says at the end, Brian, in the future, it would be greatly appreciated if you, clients, could please be specific as to what zoning bylaw you believe the owner of 163 Bay Road Extension is in violation of. So, all he did, Mr. Street did, was go to the site, see what exists today, and there's no violation. Electric permit was pulled, electric permit was closed evidently. So, he didn't rule on any specific violation.
Right.
So, I'm not sure what we're arguing about here. If 40A3 drives this, and it doesn't comply for land size, and you can't use the land under those 1,650 statutes, then what is the argument here? He can't do this. He can't use the property to do this without, well, I'm not sure, but under 40A3, he can't use the property this way.
That, that's-
He can do the farming out in the water.
Right.
He can access it from someplace else, but he can't use the docks, he can't use the upwellers on the site. Even if he were to go to a home, uh, property, a home-use property, I'm trying to see definite-
Home-based occupation.
Home-based occupation, right. He cannot change the structure. He can't put an upweller there. He cannot change the premises. It's right in there, and that, and our bylaws about doing that. So, therefore, all I'm saying is, and again, there are better people in this board than I am on this thing. If 48, Section 3 drives it, he can't do it. He cannot use the property. And that's the way I see it. But thank you. I appreciate you letting me interject.
Do you want to go ahead of Frank?
No. I'll wait my turn.
All right. Mr. Wall, the building commissioner went out to this site in April, and he said he found no violations. Presumably, there was nothing going on out there at the time.
I'll get my letter, Mr. Duffy, if I may.
We can't be second-guessing a building commissioner who didn't see anything.
So, if you look in the history of it, he did say those things initially. And I was in communication with him, there's a bunch of email chains in the record. What he said to me was, wait until there's some activity, and then come back and see me. And so, that's what my client did. And I will show you that, um, so this is the electric box that was put in. This is down close to the base of the pier. And there was, this is what we believe to be the upweller. We're not, it's private property, so I didn't go on the property. But this is the upweller that was installed on the property, and you can see there's other activity going along. So, our contention is, is that there have been steps taken in furtherance of starting this operation. And as I went through the permits, he's described very clearly to the Conservation Commission, to the Board of Selectmen, to the Federal Army Corps, and to MEPA, what he intends to do. And he has submitted plans. So, it's begun, is what it is. So, we think there's enough to, for this board to consider this.
That requires us to second-guess the building commissioner, who wants to look at an actual situation before he makes his decision, apparently. Another question, though, you opened up your remarks by citing Section 240, I think, of 16.8, and saying that the applicant does not have a special permit from the Board of Selectmen under the wetlands bylaw.
Right.
Now, if an, if an activity is being conducted in the town of Enfalmouth without a special permit required by the zoning bylaw, is the building commissioner's decision to enforce it?
Yes.
Not this board, but the building commissioner.
Right, but this is an appeal of his decision.
I know, but he didn't rule on that.
No, he didn't. Actually, Mr. Duffy, the reason why I'm here on this letter is that after I had had numerous communications with Mr. Street, he called me and said, Brian, I'm not going to be doing anything more on this. Take it up with the Board of Appeals. And so, that's why I'm here.
All right, another point. Under the zoning bylaw, Section 246.6, in an RB zoning district, it allows agriculture, and we'll accept that aquaculture is agriculture for the purpose of this discussion. But it says that if there's raising of livestock, it must be in a parcel of five acres or larger. Now, you have, in your letter, in your application, done a very good job trying to convince us that shellfish is livestock. And that, I think, is a question this board has to think about and decide, because frankly, I never even thought about it until you mentioned it. But if, if the board does not agree that shellfish is livestock, then the bylaw further provides that, on a parcel which could be less than five acres, that such accessory uses as are customarily incidental to an allowed use may be used on the lot, which means that if you don't require five acres, then the way our bylaw is written, it may be okay, as much as it may-
So, that-
Be a poorly defined, poorly-written bylaw.
Right. So, let me, there's two questions to me. So, I've already addressed the livestock issue a little bit. I'll just go slightly deeper without boring you. And I know, Mr. Duffy, with your past as an attorney, what happened was, I looked at-
Mr. Wall, could you, a little louder, I'm having-
Yeah, I know the fans are making noise.
Yeah, they are.
So, the argument about livestock is a statutory interpretation argument. Your bylaw does not define it.
Right.
So, you go to the dictionary definitions, which I did in my letters, and what the dictionary definition talks about is about farms are domestic, raising domestic type of animals. And so, animal, I looked that up, and an animal is a living thing, not a plant. And so, a shellfish is a living animal, not a plant, so therefore, it's livestock. With regard to the second part of that question, so your bylaw does allow aquaculture and agriculture as of right on parcels less than five acres, but not if it's raising livestock. You have to have five acres for livestock.
I understand, but it requires this board to come to a conclusion that we're, in fact, dealing with livestock.
Right. So, assuming, first of all, if you do determine that, then my argument would follow, as I've already raised it.
Yeah.
If you determine that shellfish aquaculture is not raising livestock, then the first two arguments I made still apply. It's allowed as a primary principal use. That's what the table is. It says other principal uses agriculture. And the principal use of this property is as a resident, residence in a residential neighborhood. So, you can't have two principal uses on the property at the same time. And then, the next argument would be, well, let's try to justify it as an accessory use. But an accessory use to a residence is one that's incidental and secondary to the residence, not a 2 million shellfish aquaculture grant.
That's getting a little far, far afield, but that brings us, in a way, to what Mr. Finneran was, was raising earlier, that typically, there's a farmhouse on a farm. Or a, and if the farm is an aquaculture farm, somebody lives there. We're dealing with a situation, frankly, I don't think has any precedent anywhere. And everything we're dealing with, with here tonight is a matter of first impression. At least, to me, it is.
Actually, I don't, I don't think it is. And I think you're going to hear from my brother, on behalf of Mr. Tyneal, he's focused in on this, and he has raised in his letter, and it says, you can have part of a property for agriculture or aquaculture, and you can have the house on it. And he cites two cases, Tinkham and Jarvis, I believe. And I read both of the cases, and they're both more than five acres. One was 8.8, and the other one was 20. And so, when you have a large piece of property that can have different uses, you can have a residential use on part of it, and you can have a farming aquaculture use on a different part. But on a three-quarter acre piece of land in a residential neighborhood that's already developed with a house and a recreational pier, my argument is, is you can't have commercial-grade aquaculture on top of that.
So, my last question to you would be just for a general comment. How do you think Enfalmouth's right-to-farm bylaw affects this?
So, again, I think that that goes to the thing about nuisance. So, if you read that right-to-farm law carefully, it doesn't say you have the right to farm anytime, anywhere, anywhere in the town, and do what it, what it says is that farms are, it doesn't use the word immunized, but my interpretation of that statute is, is farms are exempt from claims of nuisance. So, claims of noise, smells, sounds, all the things that go along with a farm, they're kind of untouchable with regard to that. So, if you, if you, for example, if you live in a residential zone, and there was a 5.5 acre parcel of land next door that had chicken coops and roosters, and they smelled and they made noise, you couldn't do anything about that under the right-to-farm statute.
Thank you.
But the right-to-farm statute doesn't preempt zoning or give farms the right to go anywhere they want to go.
It says right in the right-to-farm statute that it doesn't preempt zoning.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
It says right in the statute, the bylaw, that it does not preempt zoning.
Right.
Yeah, that's further, that's what I'm saying.
It does.
Scott?
Attorney Wall, as Tony pointed out earlier, at the end of Gary Street's response to you, he said, could you please be specific as to what zoning bylaws you believe the owner is in violation of? Did you ever go back to the building commissioner? I mean, you've come up with a very compelling case here this evening.
Yep.
Did you ever sit down with the building commissioner and go through these items?
Yes, I did. And the, I don't quite understand that comment from Mr. Street, because the letter that preempted or triggered his letter had all this argument that I've raised here. I'm talking about the use table and what's allowed, because your bylaw is one of those ones that says no use is allowed in the town whatsoever unless it's permitted by your bylaw. And that's why I'm going through this analysis of it's not permitted, it's not permitted, it's not permitted. That argument was made to Mr. Street in writing, and I discussed it with him as well.
Interesting. I guess, again, we're, because we're being very specific to the building commissioner's determination that there is no violation, is it almost like the speed limit's 55 and the car is still parked in the garage? And he's just saying, it's just not there for me yet, but it's coming, or?
Well, that's how, that's how it led up to where we are. But I would submit to you that you're there, because, and Mr. Street, in my opinion, should have reached that conclusion, too, because we came in just when the permits had been applied for, and he says, there's no activity on the property, I can't do anything, you have to wait till there's something more. And when we went in the last time, with, when I say went in, when I wrote the letter and I did go into the office and meet with him, the electric power had been put in, and the upweller had been put in. So, again, we believe that that's enough for the board to act upon, and it's obviously in furtherance of this larger project that's being discussed. Thank you. I appreciate that. That made me think of something that's not responsive to what you said, but I would urge the board to really consider this, because if you think about it, I could be a homeowner over in, like, Davisville, you have to forgive me, I do a lot of work in Enfalmouth, but I don't live in Enfalmouth. The more dense parts of town where there are 5, 10,000 square foot lots, and a person in one of those areas could go get a 5.5 acre grant somewhere in McQuayit Bay or Maggansett Harbor, and then all of a sudden claim, you know, that they can use their 5,000 square foot lot as a base of operations for an aquaculture operation. That's, that's why, this is, this could be precedent-setting if you, if you do- That's, that's why, this is, this could be precedent setting if you, if you do not take action with regard to this.
Thank you. Where to start? Okay. Five acres for livestock. Why do you think that would be?
The noises, the sounds, the smells, all the things that are associated-
How about the fact that they would graze and use that land? Don't you think that would be a very important consideration, or probably the number one consideration?
I see where you're going with that, but I don't agree. I think that part of the five acre rationale is to say that if you have five acres, you can use the land in a manner that's respectful to your neighbors, not right up to the border. So that, in other words, that there's five acres, you can put the more obnoxious parts of the operation somewhere else. That's how I see that.
It's kind of conjecture.
Well, you asked me, Mr. Fineran.
Yeah, I understand completely, but I say it's, you can't have livestock without ample land for it to graze and roam and do what livestock does. I don't think any of these clams are going to be eating the grass. I just don't see how it applies, and I, I think that to consider shellfish or livestock just because they're animals, I think that leaps too much.
Well, ponder this. You could have an industrial-sized 10,000 square foot building with probably 10,000 chickens in it, so you don't need five acres at all to run a chicken farm. But a chicken farm has all of those things that are associated with livestock, and that's why I think you need five acres.
Well, chickens can run around as well.
Right, that's my point.
The only ones anybody wants to buy eggs from anyhow.
No, but not all. But not all livestock needs fields to graze in.
Well, no zoning ordinance or by law shall regulate or restrict the use of materials or methods of construction of structures, which you're trying to do with the electricity, which is totally permitted, nor shall any ordinance or by law prohibit, unreasonably regulate, or require a special permit for the use of land for the primary purposes of commercial agriculture, aquaculture, silviculture, horticulture. I didn't even know what one of these was. Very interesting. But that's the right to farm by law.
Well, and it, but it goes on, I think you're quoting the state statute on the exemption for zoning, and then there's another sentence, which I've highlighted in my copy, that says, "Except that all such activities may be limited to parcels of five acres or more."
All such. But the right to farm by law, because I, you know what I see? I see this regulating everybody that has, and they tried to do it a couple of years ago, regulate chickens in people's backyards and stuff, and, I mean, this is a right to farm town. I mean, look at that seal, 1686, a full 90 years before this was ever a country. And look what's on there, a plow and the ocean. I mean, this is, that's the seal of Falmouth. I mean, agriculture and aquaculture has, has a long history here, and I, I think that these, this operation is protected. And also, the previous building inspector, building commissioner, came up with the same conclusion.
Well, I would think that he said there was no violation, and I agree that there was no activity on the property when we first started to contact Mr. Palmer.
Well, and then that argument as well, there's nothing going on, so there's nothing for him to look at that, at. But that doesn't necessarily mean that when he is doing something, that it's going to be illegal, and I, sorry, this is an agricultural community. This guy went through the Conservation Commission, the Department of Marine Fisheries, the DEP, the Army Corps of Engineers, the Board of Selectmen, and again, we're a right to farm town, and I don't see how this operation can hurt or offend anyone.
Madam, madam, madam chair.
Really? Quiet, come on, quiet. You want to speak, you have your right to come up to the, yeah.
Madam Chair, may I through Mr. Fineran? First of all, I make sure of something here, because, again, if 483 drives, it doesn't matter what this town's done in the past. The rule of law is the rule of law. Without the rule of law, we've got nothing, all right? Has to have five acres. Now, I'm looking at a plan here by BSS Design dated April 14, 2020. I want to ask you this question. Do you think that this plan was used at the select board to get this license?
I don't know, because the proceedings, the order of proceedings was it started with that grant from the Board of Selectmen, but there's no requirement to notify a butters. I'm not saying there wasn't notice, I'm sure that it was posted in Town Hall, but my client did not know about that.
The reason I'm asking you this question is because you brought it up earlier, that he's not necessarily using it this way at the moment, but you're trying to get ahead of it so he doesn't spend the money. He's already spent some money, I was there today, I can see that. But if he used this plan of April 14, 2020 to get his license from the select board, it shows an upweller, it shows the electric power to it. So the intent is here to use this land, if he used this plan that I'm talking about, the intent is very clear that he's going to use this land for farming. And if the statute doesn't allow it because he doesn't have five, he can do whatever he wants to do offshore, he's got a license for that. Select board only gave him a license for oyster farming offshore, am I correct?
They gave him a license offshore, and they gave him a license for those nursery bags in Rans Canal.
But there, there, it's very specific, at the back of the license, it's very specific to location, and I don't have that in front of me.
I can answer that question, because I'm familiar with it. So the statute actually requires an applicant to describe the grant area essentially like a deed with meets and bounds or GPS coordinates. And also, the statute says that the selectman has the right to license the waters, and so I would submit to you that the license is offshore, it's five point, whatever, it's nine acres or 5.5. And there's also a small area of Rans Canal just seaward of his dock that he can put those nursery bags in, but the license does not affect his upland.
But the license was granted, well, I don't know this, I wasn't there. If he used this plan to obtain his license, and I don't know this, I guess that his attorney will have to talk about this, if he used that license, this plan by BS Engineering dated April 14, 2020, it clearly shows his intent to install an upweller, to install electricity, and to use it for his oyster farming business.
Oh, absolutely, and I, I don't want to say, because I can't remember for sure, but on behalf of my client, I attended the Conservation Commission hearings. So Mr. Tyneal has known about our views of things since then, and I believe that plan was part of the conservation permitting part, which was in 2022, 2019?
Well, the plan is April 14, 2020, and-
I can remember, it was in person, so it was before COVID.
So the intent is, if that is the case, and maybe his attorney's going to speak to this, but the intent is that he's going to use it as an oyster farming facility.
That's our belief, and I-
And the statute does not allow him to do that if he doesn't have five acres.
I want to make sure I'm clear about that. Your by law allows agriculture on less than five acres, but not for livestock.
But what did, how did he, how is he operating or intending to operate? How did he get his license? Is his license strictly to use that specific area on the water?
Yeah, each-
So then how could he, without getting, going through special permit, and maybe I missed a part of it, to use his property? He can use the waters.
Right.
But he can't use the property, because he has no permit to do that.
That's our contention.
An upweller is an integral part of that process. You have to start them somewhere, and then you put them in the bags. They permit these things all over, they're aware of that.
But it's on his property here.
Yeah, and the plan is on the-
And the intent is clear as to how he wants to use his property, and again, there are more learned people on this board than me, he can't do that under the statute. But now we're talking about a by law that would allow him to do what?
That's if you accept the definition that shellfish are livestock. And I mean, they don't, they don't do what livestock does. That's a reach.
483 specifically talks about aquaculture. What is the definition of aquaculture?
Aquaculture is agriculture.
Yeah, well, that's what oysters are.
I guess, through the chair, and Noreen, I mean, we're here specifically to respond to Mr. Street's response on April 7, whether there was a violation or not. All of this other information that we're going through, and Attorney Wall's outline, is this for, like, another day? I just, as of this date, there was no violation. That's what the, that's what the building commissioner has stated, and I believe from what I'm hearing, that was probably accurate. What the intention, if this continues to go much further, sounds like there's a compelling view here that it shouldn't go any further, but I thought that our purview this evening was specific to, to building commissioners, whether this is accurate or not. And that's where I get, we've, we've kind of run the gamut here on what ifs, and we're going to hear from the, you know, the attorneys and the public, but I'm just a little confused. Isn't it specifically only about this letter from Gary Street?
Correct.
So I guess we're kind of getting out over our skis here on one of this other discussion.
Through you, so you're saying that there's currently no violation of the use of the property?
Correct.
So what are we sending it back to the building commissioner for? Why would we send it back if there's no violation of property use today?
That's my position, potentially.
Through you, Madam Chair, is that I believe with that testimony from Attorney Wall, that he has requested enforcement, and the building commissioner has said, "I'm not getting involved in this." So at that point, the board has to make a decision, either affirm what the building commissioner has done, or overrule him, at which point, if people are further aggrieved, they can seek further redress through courts.
Correct. I, I disagree with that. He's not going to get involved in this, I mean, he-
I'm just saying what the testimony was, I'm not-
Yeah, that's, that's just, that's a little too convenient for me. I mean, how's he supposed to come up with any violation if, if there's nothing going on to begin with? And then when something else does transpire there, that, that's when that determination can be made. I mean, we're here to determine if the building commissioner used all the proper metrics to, to make this judgment, and I certainly believe-
Madam Chair, through you, we just heard a testimony from Attorney Wall, that he presented the building commissioner with what, again, repeat-
That photograph of the electricity and of the upweller.
And he found that just because, what he says is, well, they got a permit to put the electricity in, evidently they closed out that permit, it was done, whatever had to be done. I saw all of that out there.
Right.
There's no violation with that, and there apparently is no other violation on the property yet.
If I may, I'm going to take something Mr. Fineran said just a minute ago. I think he said an upweller is an integral part to an aquaculture operation. And so I agree that the quantum of activity is not too intense right now, but we don't have to put blinders on and ignore the information that's been submitted to public agencies. It's crystal clear that Mr. Tyneal wants to have a 5.5 acre grow out area for 2 million oysters.
Let me, and I'm not saying I disagree with you, but why can't I just, if I want to put an upweller in my backyard, because I'm, for me, it would be foolish, I wouldn't be doing anything with it, why couldn't I just do that? Is that a violation of the by law?
Probably, if it meets setbacks and other things, probably not, probably not. And, but again, it's, it's, it's the big picture that I'm trying to make the case here with.
I'm trying to figure out, and Madam Chair, I apologize, but I'll end here, I think. If we're only to consider the appeal on the, on Mr. Street's findings, then what are we sending it back to him to do? I'm not sure what we're telling him he needs to go do. Go stop something that may happen in the future? Or are we trying to set something up at this moment that says, "By the way, if you do this on your property, all the folks that would file an appeal to the building commissioner need to come in at that point in time." So are we supposed to just agree with Mr. Street at the moment, because there's no violation, but there may be a violation? We can't do that.
I think you could interpret the power installation and the upweller as part of the larger picture and say there is a violation, because it all goes to use. The electricity itself is not necessarily a violation, but using-
Well, I believe there will be a violation.
Well, I already think there is. I think that it, he's taking, why did he put the power in? It's not for a hot tub, it's, it's to put up the upweller there.
But the point is, he's not, you're saying he's in violation of 483, he's in violation of our bylaws.
Right.
But there's nothing on the site, other than the upweller and the electricity, that's really in violation. If he meets the setbacks, as you pointed out earlier, and he's not actually, I don't know what he, what he has to do to actually use the property that way, I'm not sure what comes next on this thing, but I'm not sure what we're sending back to the, Mr. Street.
Sending anything back? We're just going to, it's an appeal of his decision. Can you pick out anything he did wrong? I mean, we can't.
Well, that's what I'm trying to determine, or I think-
Well, I mean, you're, you're looking too far into the future. I mean, it's just what's in front of us.
Madam Chair, may perhaps be the time to offer if the owner has representation here of the thing.
I just said that, yes. Would the applicant's attorney like to come up, please?
Thank you.
I just said that, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Adam Brodsky. I'm an environmental and land use lawyer with DTM Law in Hingham, and I'm here on behalf of Scott Tyneal, who owns the property. And with me this evening is Alexander Tyneal, who's involved in the aquaculture businesses and is available for questions. And so as Attorney Wall has alluded to, we've done this before. As you know, from my July 24 letter, I was hired in 2020 to address this very same issue. And to be clear here, the suggestion that Mr. Marmory is trying to give the Tyneals a heads up of a problem, I respectfully suggest is not accurate. He has repeatedly asserted that the agricultural use of 163 Bay extension violates your zoning. That's always been the issue, that's the question that was raised in 2020. That was the question that was raised for enforcement, and Mr. Street has said that it does not violate your zoning. So that's the issue here. It's not some, whether some future activity is going to violate zoning. The property is presently in agricultural use, has been in agricultural use for some time, and I just want to make sure that you understand what the issue is before you. I'm candidly surprised to be here in front of you, since this issue was addressed to Mr. Street's predecessor, Rod Palmer. And in fact, I provided you with copies of my letter, which addressed these very same issues. Mr. Palmer did not find that the agriculture use of this property was a zoning violation, and Mr. Street similarly. And so your role here this evening is to either uphold Mr. Street's determination or overrule. Now, back in 2020, it was a predecessor code. You've recodified your zoning code, and I did my best in my July 24 letter to provide references to your current zoning code. And we assert that Mr. Street is absolutely correct on both the law and the facts, and that the decision should be upheld. And I don't use this term lightly. We believe that this is a frivolous appeal, and this is not the only time that Mr. Marmory has tried to stop this project. He's been involved in this process for years, has opposed this project consistently. This is simply another tactic that's being used to slow the Tyneals down, to require that they pay me to appear before you, and I suggest that that's the strategy here. It also begs the question of whether Mr. Marmory actually has legal standing to appeal a zoning determination, because we respectfully suggest that he's not aggrieved by this decision, but that issue's not before this board. So a couple of key points, and, and I'm going to respectfully disagree with Attorney Wall, and perhaps Mr. Petrucci, you're understanding. Massachusetts General Law 48, Section 3 is the agricultural exemption. It says that- It says that agricultural uses are exempt from zoning. It doesn't say only for parcels, five acres or more. It says that if a town wishes to place an additional acreage requirement, it can. So we have the agricultural exemption under the statute, and we have your zoning code. Your zoning code allows by right agriculture in the RB zoning district. I believe that there's no dispute at this point that agriculture also means aquaculture under 240, Section 3.2. So in an RB zoning district, agriculture is allowed by right. It doesn't matter whether it's commercial, doesn't matter whether it's non-commercial. Most agricultural uses are commercial. I mean, farmers farm, for the most part, commercial activities. So that's a red herring. The notion of commercial not being allowed and residential is addressed by the fact that agriculture is allowed within your zoning district. So to some extent, we don't have to rely upon the agricultural exemption for that. Now, the town in adopting the bylaw created another requirement. It's allowed to do that under 48, Section 3, which says that if you're raising and keeping livestock, you're required to have a minimum of five acres. And Mr. Finneran has it absolutely correctly. The reason for that is that livestock needs pasturage. And if you read some of my letters to Commissioner Palmer, I cite to the UMass Extension, I cite to all of the authorities, that says, for example, a Jersey cow, which is typically about 1,000 pounds, needs two acres of land to, to pasture, to safely maintain the animals. It's not about, it's not about segregating bad agricultural practices from neighbors. That's actually what the Right to Farm Bill does. It says basically, you know, if, if you have an agricultural use, you really can't complain about this smell. The reason that towns have the ability to, and they don't always do it, is that in certain instances, you want to perhaps require a minimum acreage. So for livestock, cattle, horses, pigs, which require pasture, it's reasonable to require pasturage of a minimum size. I don't think under any stretch of, of, of at least my imagination, that oysters can be considered livestock which require pastures. It's simply a, a, an illogical conclusion. And you're required to interpret your zoning bylaw in a reasonable manner. I respectfully suggest that to consider oysters which don't require pasturage. As, as livestock, I, I think is contrary to the intent of the bylaw, and certainly contrary to standard farming practices. And so the whole issue of the five acres is a red herring here. I respectfully suggest that for shell fishing, which does not require pasturage, under a reasonable interpretation of your zoning bylaw, you don't require that. In fact, there are criticisms that say that if in fact you have a, a by right agricultural use in a district, there shouldn't be any acreage requirements because, again, as, as Mr. Moore suggested, the agricultural exemption is broadly construed by the courts. I, I should say that, you know, again, and I don't, I, I don't want to get caught in the same trap of kind of turning points on itself. Even if this was not a by right use, which it is in your district, it would be exempt under the agricultural exemption under 48, Section 3 generally, which is here to promote agriculture in Massachusetts. Similarly, the notion that you can't have concurrent residential and agricultural use on a property is protected by the agricultural exemption. And there is precedent. And I provided you with the case law in one of my 2020 letters. And, and one of the cases I cited to is Jarvis versus Knowles, which actually made the very same point that Mr. Finneran made, that if you're going to prohibit residential use on a farm, you're going to kill family farming in Massachusetts, which is the majority of farms, because we don't have a great deal of commercial operations like you see in other parts in the country. Family farms are the heart of agricultural Massachusetts. Of course, you can have a residential use and an agricultural use at the same time. And the courts have, have recognized that. And, and lastly, I'm just trying to keep this short and simple, because I think the board may have been going in a different direction. The, the, your bylaw requires a special permit from the select board for a project which will obstruct, fill, dredge, excavate, or change the course of a stream or tidal water. That's what you need a special permit for. None of the activities that are proposed by the Tyneals are going to result in the obstruction, filling, dredging, excavation, or changing of the course of any stream or tidal water. And again, if you're focusing solely on a 163 Bay Road extension, the only thing that's in the water, and, and again, there's an existing pier that's used for access for the, to, to get to the grow areas. But the only thing that goes on there are the storage of oyster bags along the shoreline, right on Rans Canal. They don't block the canal. The bags are aligned so, at, at the end of the existing float, they're located outside of the channel. And again, on the facts, there's nothing going on here that would obstruct any tidal waters, which is why, again, the, the town has not required the Tyneals to obtain a special permit from the select board. So from our perspective, it's a fairly straightforward question. And I think the board may have gotten a little sideways on some of these issues. I'm happy to answer your questions. Alex is here to answer any questions. And I'm available.
Great. Any questions from the board?
I mean, I think, are we considering aquaculture a subset of agriculture? Then we have to follow 48, Section 3 as it pertains to agriculture.
So through, through you, Chairman Murphy, yes, agriculture is specifically defined in both the state statute and your bylaw to expressly include aquaculture, which is what we're performing. It's Section 240 dash 3.2 under your zoning code.
But then we want to consider clams not the same as, now we want to give it a clam special consideration as not being the same as it pertains to the bylaw.
No, sir. Again, through you, Chairman Murphy, aquaculture clearly includes shell fishing. What you have in your zoning code, in your table of uses for agricultural in the RB is a separate requirement that says that essentially for raising livestock, you need a minimum of five acres. It relates to the raising of livestock. So again, there's no requirement for shell fishing, an acreage in your bylaw, which makes perfect sense, because I think is, is, has been said, that the, the actual grow areas are offshore and not, not on this land.
You all set? You want? Just quick, just for, for me, this is a little complex. I'll admit that. So when the select board gave Mr. Tyneal a license to raise oysters, that license was specifically for a location and only that location?
I believe that's the case. I was not involved in that, but that's what a typical grant of a shellfish license would do. That's correct.
It has GPS location on the license. Because he has that license, and if he lives, and just because he lives beside it, why does that give him, again, tell me, why does that give him the right to use his home as a home-based business?
Sir, because that's part of the overall agricultural use. The, that provides access to the grow areas, the storage of the boats, the upweller for the seed stock. All of those are protected agricultural uses that are used, associated with the grow area. And the property is actually being used, the, the Tylands are being used to mature seed into small-
But if he does not own land under the ocean, who cares? It's not connected to his property. It's not like a farm where you have pastures and they're all, and the house happens to be sitting in one of the pasture lands. It's not connected.
Again, through you, Chairman Murphy, again, I think you're hung up on this five acres thing, which is that for shell fishing-
No, I'm, I'm hung up on, yes, I am.
Yes, sir.
I'm hung up on the connection you're making to, just because he has the right to farm up front, there's no connection to his house being right there in the uplands.
So, Mr. Murphy, the, the property at 163 Bay Extension Road is being used for agricultural use. That is part and parcel of the overall aquaculture project, as I said. It provides access to the grow areas. They grow seed stock there. They have equipment there to, for that seed stock. They have bags of, where they allow the seeds to grow. It is an active part of the agricultural operation and therefore is a protected agricultural use.
So I could have a farm down the street, a pasture, let's just, because I'm getting lost in what's pasture and not pasture. So I have a pasture down the street, and I have my house 10 miles up this way, not connected to that pasture. I don't own the road. I don't own any land in between. I can connect the two?
I can't answer that, sir. It depends on what town you're in and what the zoning requirements are.
In Falmouth.
I would say that, for, for example, the, the agricultural exemption may protect that, but it's a hypothetical that I can't answer. I would need more specifics.
Well, he's definitely separated from that location that he has a license for.
And again, it's irrelevant, because the property that's the subject of this zoning appeal is presently in agricultural use.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any questions?
I do. Judging by the turnout here, I see a lot of people from North Falmouth and McGansett. I think the concern is going to be this is going to somehow turn into some type of commercial enterprise. Under the, presuming you're right, that the use is exempt under the agricultural exemption, does the town under the zoning bylaw, or is it your position, still have the right to regulate reasonable hours of operation, parking of commercial or oversized vehicles on this lot, because it's being used for agricultural use?
The town does have the ability to reasonably regulate exempt activities. But don't, this, this project doesn't presently require any permitting for which you could impose those requirements.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
So for me?
Mr. Brodsky, looking at the license, the aquaculture license, this board of selectmen granted in June of 2024, under Chapter 130, Section 57, they did three things that I saw, two of which I have no difficulty accepting. One, they allowed for the mesh bags to be placed in the canal adjacent to the dock. And then they granted the grow area, the 5.9 acres out in McGansett Harbor. But it seems to me that one of the things they did was that they also approved a land-based upweller, which seems to me to be beyond their authority to do so. Because it's got, their jurisdiction under 130, Section 57 is the water. And I, I, I think part of the problem here is that maybe the selectmen kind of went above and beyond their authority.
I can't answer that question, sir. One, I was not involved in that licensing process. Two, I'm gathering that the appeal period for any challenge of that license is long gone.
Long gone.
And that's not, that is not a zoning issue, if I might say, Mr. Duffield.
Well, I think it is a zoning issue, because the, the license specifically says that condition number six of the license must comply with the zoning bylaw.
Correct. And it does. Again, this isn't a by right allowed use within this zoning district. So, you know, I like to think of the agricultural exemption as a get out of jail card free, which we don't even need here, because the town, I think in its wisdom, has said that we support agriculture. Agriculture is allowed in these specified zoning districts as a matter of right. But if you're going to raise Jersey cows, that each requires two acre of pasturage, it makes sense to place an acreage limit on that. Again, it's, it's, it's for the protection of the animals. I'd say less so because of nuisance conditions, but they want to make sure that they have good husbandry practices, so there's sufficient land area for the number of livestock that are being raised. And, and again, if you read through my materials, you'll, you'll see there's a lot of material from the UMass Extension and other sources that talk about what you minimally need to raise particular livestock. The requirement for horses is, is similar but different than cows. But that's the reasoning behind the five acre requirement.
Well, let's talk briefly about what's going on there today.
Yes, sir.
The upweller, what's in it?
I'm not sure there's anything in it at present. I assume there's seeds. Alex?
Sure, come on up. Just tell us your name and address, please. My name is Alex Tyneal. My father lives at Scott, Scott Tyneal is at 163 Bay Road, and I'm his son. We're joint owners and actively trying to just raise some oysters on our property and out in McGansett Bay. As far as the upweller goes, in this picture, you can see, the reason you can't just have an upweller on any property is the water is drawn from Rans Canal, and there needs to be continuous circulation to obviously keep oxygen, food supply to the oyster seed. We get them at 1 millimeter. They're currently at about three quarters of an inch. I'd also like to point out that the complaint was over traffic. We've had one box truck that actually delivered to our address, to the bill to address, rather than the shipping address. I've done everything that I can to possibly not bother our neighbors. My dad is trying, I'm trying to retire my dad. It's our home. Like, we don't want to ruin this either. And I get it. It's, there's a concern about future activity. I'm trying to do everything we can to talk to neighbors, explain what it is. Honestly, there is transportation that is going to be done with my personal pickup truck and cooling to take it off-site. And there is, I'm trying to minimalize it as much as possible.
As of today, or perhaps April, when the building commissioner made his decision, was there any mature shellfish brought from the 5.9 acres onto your property for processing or bagging?
No.
So it's not happened?
So we did not get our first seed shipment. I have to have a complete, due to the town's laws, a complete work log. I have documented since December, when we were doing repairs in the dock, that we got permission to do, when we applied and put in our electric work. The complaint came at the time that an electrician's truck was installing the electric through our property. And again, on the second week of May, we received our first seed order. The power is to provide power to the pumps that draw the water from Rans Canal into the tank. This has been in operation since the second week of May.
What was the date that the electrician's truck was there, if you remember, sir?
I'd have to pull up my work log, but I believe he started work, I think I notified to, we had to do a 10-day notice to Conservation Commission, and I believe that was the second week of January, when we notified our intent to begin electric work. And I believe he showed up either the, I believe it was the first week of February, but plus or minus a week. I could provide you my work journal if that would help.
Okay, so was that, that blank electric box in present when the building commissioner was out there?
Yes.
So, I'm sorry. No, no, please. For you, Chairman Murphy, again, if I might respectfully suggest, it's the use of the property for agriculture, not necessarily particular activities that are going to be necessary. So our fear here is that, is that if there's some suggestion that, well, the, the, Mr. Marmory has got another shot at this, at, if there's some future agri, use that they want to challenge, we'd like to be able to get a decision, we already have a decision, that it's the agricultural use of the property, not specific activities, which were the subject of this enforcement. So the suggestion that certain things may have happened after the building commissioner issued his letter, I, I think is, 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 offers Mr. Marmory another opportunity and another bite at the apple to challenge the agricultural use. It's not the particular activities, it's the use for agriculture of the entire property.
I'm just trying to determine what the building commissioner saw on, on that April date. I'm not trying to get into all this extraneous stuff. Okay?
I'm, I'm, I don't know if I'm just being too myopic. Again, I'm just focused on April 7th. I, I'll, again, I'll reiterate, I think Attorney Wall made a very compelling case on a lot of items, but none of those have ever transpired. Will they transpire in the future? I think they will. will. I'm, maybe they're here. It's a very small little road to get there, that, you know, Bay Road extension. I guess if I was in a butter, you know, how many refrigerator trucks, when you're running at full capacity, are going to be coming up and down that small little road? I guess that would be something that I would be concerned about. But again, for tonight's hearing, I believe the purview of the board is specific to this date and time, and I just don't believe that there was any issue at this date and time.
Again...
And I'm not, I don't think we're here to determine anything that goes on in the future, and if somebody gets a second bite of the apple, then so be it, I believe, in my opinion. I'm not an attorney.
Again, I stand to be corrected. The request to the building commissioner, both Mr. Palmer and Mr. Street, was the agricultural use of the property violates zoning. Both, both building commissioners said no. So it's not in one particular moment of time, the property is presently being used for agricultural purposes. And that was the whole purpose of the zoning enforcement request, both in 2020 and apparently now.
Thank you for the clarification. Well, we're here to review the, well, both building commissioners' determinations. And I don't think anybody here came up with anything that we can hang our hat on. Again, I mean, just the basics. This is a right-to-farm community. And also, everybody in McGansett benefits from this operation because the town is so behind this shellfish propagation because it cleans the water. Activities, oh, it doesn't? Really?
Quiet, quiet, quiet. Come on.
Quiet, please. I'm sorry. My statement was correct. It does clean the water. If you have anything to say, you can say it during the comment period. But the shellfish absolutely clean the waters. They, there's just too much science behind it. They, just like livestock eats grass, shellfish eat the crap in the water, which every one of you deposit. And you're not, you're not required to sewer like other parts of this town. And part of it is because of what these shellfish do. And this is a right-to-farm community. And just one, a point of order, I guess, would, a property on Brainerd Road, that wouldn't be considered in a butter, would it? I didn't ask you, sir.
I think it's within the square footage.
Yeah, whatever goes on on this road has nothing to do with anybody else. I mean, did anyone from Bay Road complain?
No.
There were no letters.
No, there were no letters.
Yeah.
One letter of support.
One letter of support.
Came today.
We got a letter of support today.
Okay. There's nothing that we can hang our hat on that the building commissioner did wrong.
Chair, Chair Murphy, to Mr. Fineran's point, we did, I did receive today a letter from the East Coast Shellfish Growers Association, which I'm happy to submit to the board. I'm sorry, I don't have copies. I was not planning on providing it this evening, but to Mr. Fineran's point, it provides all of the references to the benefits of shellfishing. And so, if you like, I might as well offer it into the record. I apologize for not having copies for everyone.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, you guys ready to go to the public? Everybody's got enough? Okay, public. So we're going to the appeal. Thank you, both. We're going to the appeal. And who would like to come up first? Name an address, please. Two minutes.
Okay, so my name's Ed Marcuselli, and I'm the property owner at 131 Bay Road. While I'm not a director butter, I would be impacted by this commercial operation on the road. Totally understand and appreciate everybody's open-mindedness. But I did notify the previous building inspector with a certified letter back in December of 2020, objecting to the proposed commercial operation in a residential zone. I followed up with, I guess, the new building inspector, because at the time, Mr. Palmer said that, we haven't even started, there's nothing for me to review, there's nothing happening on the lot, there's no building. I contacted, I believe this April or May, when all of this activity started, and said that I would be notified. Mr. Palmer said he would notify me if indeed there was any activity on the lot that he could then go and evaluate. Apparently, the new building inspector did not have my letter, was unaware of my previous objection to the project. So just as a direct rebuttal to some of the statements that were earlier where we only have one letter of support. Tonight is the first time I've seen Mr. Tynell. So I've lived on the road for 26 years, so obviously there's a lack of communication here. And we should probably take a step back and really look at what we're doing here in terms of a commercial operation. And I totally understand the right to farm, but I don't believe that back in the days when we had horses and cows and your pasture, that aquaculture was a big thing. Have no problem with aquaculture. I just don't think a commercial operation on a single-lane dirt road that is heavily residential is appropriate for this use. And there's also some ancillary impacts that I've already had to go through with the Department of Fisheries, because I'm actually the owner of the herring run that is, would be impacted with commercial refrigerated trucks going back and forth up the road. Would love to see Mr. Tynell be successful. I think there's other ways for him to run a commercial operation while not using his current property. And I sat through your Crystal Springs evaluation, small lot in New Silver, but there would be nothing for a owner of that lot to essentially install an upweller, commercial operation, some commercial electricity, and get five acres out in New Silver Beach area. Essentially, that's what we're saying. And we don't think that would be a good use of that dense neighborhood. And this is a dense neighborhood as well. So with that, thank you for your time. I appreciate you hearing me.
Thank you. Name an address, please.
Jim Memory, 42 Brainerd Road. I resent the fact that anybody would suggest that I'm not impacted by it, since my kids play in the water right adjacent to that canal, to the dock. I am closer to that dock than any other, anybody else in the room. And to suggest that I'm not impacted by it is disingenuous by their...
What impact would that be?
He's going to be floating bags there.
On his side of the canal?
It's all of 25 feet from where my kids play. Okay. And from where boats travel.
It's not in the boat-traffic lane?
It most certainly will impact the boat-traffic. In addition, I think the select board was misguided.
We're just doing the appeal, please.
Okay. But, but there was been conversation about why did the selectmen approve this to get to this point. So I'd like to address the fact that...
Okay, make two minutes.
I'd like to address the fact that the select board was, never notified anybody of this issue. And if anybody thinks that, everybody here reads the Falmouth Enterprise, they obviously have, look at what's going on. On top of that, at their April meeting in 2024, the select board was quite familiar with the fact that many neighbors were in opposition to this. And asked Mr. Tynell point-blank if he would, if he had solved his issues with the local people, his neighbors. He refused to respond. And in, what's happened is the select board took that as an affirmative answer. And, and I think that's totally unfair. And his, to me, it's misrepresentation by omission. I think my, my other concerns are that, I've asked Mr. Tynell if he would put in writing that he will not sell this enterprise in the future to one of the major companies, because that's recently happened. I don't know if you're familiar with the other oyster farm outside of our canal, but that recently was sold to one of the major companies, and they have doubled the size of it.
We're back to the appeal.
Okay.
Please.
So my argument against dealing with Mr. Tynell here is that he openly and flagrantly violates regulations, evidenced by his failure to abide by his current chapter 91 license, which does not permit electric at that dock. And he's installed it anyway. Does not permit water at his dock. He's installed it anyway. In addition, he's not allowed to tie up in the front, which this would allow, this would cause front tie-ups. It requires seasonal removal of that dock, okay? He plans to put bags in the, in the winter as well on that dock, which has to be seasonally removed. So I don't know how that's going to happen. On top of that, it's required to be removed by an approved ramp. I've lived there for 10 years. He has never once approved it, removed it, and he has never once had an approved ramp there. No work is allowed in the salt marsh, and yet he and his contractors have repeatedly violated this. If you are like me, you believe that someone's future actions are best guided by their past and their current behavior. I submit to you, that's his current behavior.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come up? Sure, come on. Name an address, please.
Kevin Van, 73 Bryant Point Road. And as Ms. Murphy has suggested, try and keep it within the boundaries of 163 Bay Road Extension. So just a quick comment, and that is, how do we know the footprint on 163 Bay Road doesn't become a staging area for other businesses to use this property to market their oysters or any other fish or shellfish? Once this business is given permission to operate as a commercial entity, there's no stopping who's coming and going, and it could be easily used as a wholesale fish business, which will have a dramatic impact, negative impact, on our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Dear members of the zoning board, my name is Marty Walsh. My home is located at 171 Bay Road. I directly abut Mr. Scott Tynell's property at 163 Bay Road. My wife and I purchased this property back in June of 2021, so we did not make the 2020 when they had a question about abutters at the time. Given this is a zoning meeting, I want to be clear that I'm not here to dispute the permits and certificates that have been granted to the Tynells to grow and harvest oysters in McGansett Bay or Canal, Rans Canal. Rather, our concern is that the possible result of such permits without appropriate zoning restrictions could be that the large-scale commercial activity begins to take place on Bay Road after the oysters are harvested. Such commercial activity, including but not limited to the cleaning, processing, transporting of oysters on a very narrow road, residential road, dirt road, would significantly disrupt the day-to-day lives of all residents of Bay Road. I spoke with the Tynells about my concern, and they've shared that their intention is not to do this work, cleaning, processing, and transporting on or from their residential property. While I appreciate this, I also understand the permit granted to the Tynells include five offshore acres, five-plus, which gives them the permit, the potential to grow hundreds of thousands, if not millions, of oysters a year. This has the potential to be a large commercial operation. As such, should be reviewed by the zoning board to be sure activities taking place on site comply with current residential zoning regulations. Even if the Tynells' intent is not to do the commercial work off-site, I mean, to do the work off-site, the property that, in the permits, could change hands, and a new owner could take full advantage of the permits and lack of zoning guardrails, which would have a significant negative impact on all residents on Bay Road, with considerable noise, odor, and large vehicles on the single-lane dirt road. We wish the Tynells success with their business while respectfully requesting that the zoning board ensure that the commercial activity, such as the cleaning, process, and transporting of the oysters, does not take place in a residentially zoned area while under the remit of the current owners or future potential owners. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Bradford Baldwin. I have property at 57 Bryant Point Road and 0 Bryant Point Road, two parcels that abut the Tynells' property. And I attended that meeting back in 2020, and I had concerns, and I was brushed off with no concern about my concerns. You know, I am seriously concerned about a commercial entity operating in property that is, you know, abutting my properties. And, you know, I have got no relief from any kind of reassurances from Tynells. I've been told, go see an attorney. So they're not cooperative. They're not trying to help, you know, work with the neighbors. I don't feel that whatsoever. And I am concerned about the property value that I'm going to have, as far as it's going to affect the property values going down. You know, they're going to be ultimately, if you know what an aquaculture farm does, they have to clean, power wash, do all kinds of sounds as far as with, you know, what they have to do to maintain their aquaculture farm. And that's going to be going on endlessly. And I don't want it next to my property, and I don't want to be near them with, you know, aquaculture farms, you know, right adjacent to my property. And I have two properties that touch their property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Lisa Maroni, 53 Bryant Point Road. I live near this property, and the area in which we live is dense, is fairly densely populated, and I think what goes on there will affect many families. Brad is one of my neighbors, as is Kevin and Catherine. I live downwind from this property, and I'm concerned that it will become basically a selfish processing plant, not only for this business, but has been pointed out, possibly by other aquaculture farmers. I think that the farm may result in vermin. I don't need to describe them. I think there'll be terrible smells, and I'll be dealing with noise pollution and air pollution by the traffic, as well as the burden on our roads. And I would also say that, I think everyone covered this point about the five acres, but one thing about having a buffer when you have land between houses, it's significant. We're densely, we're densely packed in there, and if this five-acre rule applied, and I agree with Mr. Wall that it should apply, there would be probably other houses. The zoning would probably have homes with larger property around them, acreage, so that I would not be so close to this processing plant, nor would Brad. So I support the legal analysis of the five-acre rule, and also think it protects me and others from the nuisances and hazards of this property.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Brian Crowley, 32 Abbeys Lane, North Falmouth. I'm just going to start out saying that we, it was a comment made that no one in McGansett, everyone in McGansett was in favor of this, and it would be great for us a little while ago. We have over 200 signatures hoping that this board or someone in the town of Falmouth denies this application. So that comment is completely wrong. I guess I can't speak anymore about this now because I did go down to the Board of Appeals office two weeks ago and said, I want to talk about the fact that I'm not in favor of the Outer Harbor development. Sounds like you're saying I can't talk about that tonight. I just want to clarify. Before I start...
The thing is, the zoning, the building commissioner found no violations.
Yeah.
At the property.
At the property.
Not the five acres.
In April.
Yeah.
And we've got, you guys have refrigeration trucks everywhere. You guys are projecting in, into the future. So I don't think it...
So I don't think it is.
I went down, I went down, I've come here twice in person to say that the project in the Outer Harbor, the five acres in the Outer Harbor, the black floating bags, is the most unsafe project you've ever seen in this Outer Harbor. And that's, I came down to ask if I was allowed to talk about it.
That's not our jurisdiction, no. Sorry.
Well, your department said I could, so, and I came back a second time just to make sure, and the office was closed last Friday.
Yes.
And I went to the, there was a gentleman in the planning department, and they said, as long as you're talking about the application, you can come up there. So.
This is not an application.
I have, I have a.
Not an application. This is an appeal of a.
But whatever it is.
Well, no, that's not whatever.
Whatever it is. If you said an application to him, then you are, but he might not have known it was an appeal.
It's an appeal.
That's a different ballgame.
I know, but I asked a specific question.
The building commissioner has nothing.
You used the word "appeal."
I was at the Board of Appeals, and I said, can I talk about the Outer Harbor? And the answer was yes. So if you're telling me I can't, then I got to sit down.
Yeah.
But it's the most unsafe thing you've ever seen.
Come on up.
Do you want to speak? You come up to the microphone.
Hey, 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 come on now. Sir, sir, please, please.
Taunt you, I'm telling you the parameters of this.
All right, get him on. Please, both of you, please. Come on up, sir. Name an address, please.
Alex Tyneal, 163 Bay Road. I did just want to address that last concern and make note that the floating bags that that individual is discussing is not part of our farm.
Thank you.
The floating bags that are outside.
Hey, 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 please.
I was going to say, the individual just stated that he's concerned about the other Outer Harbor with the floating bags that look like trash cans. We have no gear deployed in the 5.9 acres currently. It's not us. Our plan is approved for bottom cages, which has no visual impact.
There were other, there were other farms out there.
Yes.
Bottom cages, no visual impact.
Correct. That's, your attorney Walsh presented that earlier.
Building commissioner has no impact on that, so it's.
Okay, let's move on. Anybody else want to talk on the appeal?
Gene Crowley, 22 Abbeys Lane, North Falmouth. I heard on a few occasions that you can't make a decision on something that hasn't happened. But then I heard that a decision had been made, that it's an as-of-right use, so there really has been a decision made. So why can't this be something that the board decides upon since the building inspector obviously has made a decision that it's an as-of you, as-of right use? A decision has been made.
Tonight, we're just here that he saw no violations. Someone filed, I think the gentleman there filed, that he thought there is violations. The building inspector said there aren't any violations, and we're here to decide if there was violations. That's all we're here for, that's it.
Okay, well, I heard on a number of occasions that you have to wait for a decision to be made, and I thought that's what the Board of Appeal does, is if something has been decided that may not be correct, you're supposed to review it and consider it and vote on it.
As a distinction, this, this board, so permits have already been issued for the licenses, hence the installations. This board's role is not to rescind those licenses or affect that farming that's already in place. This board's role tonight is just based on, there was a request made to the building commissioner for enforcement at Bay Road that there was a violation. This board's purpose tonight is to review if there was or was not a violation and support or not what the building commissioner's determination is. This board's role is not to undo all the other permitting that's in place.
Well, I wasn't looking for that, but if no decision is going to be made, then when is this going, is this going to blow up into a big lawsuit? That's where this is headed, because there won't be a decision for you to review.
So this board tonight will make a decision based upon the distinct request that was made about a violation. So a violation was alleged, the building commissioner went to the property and reported there was not one.
I, I understand, I understand the technicality that you're saying that the building, I read what the building inspector wrote, and I know he chose his words very carefully so that he could say, at this time, there's been no violation. That's clear why he wrote it the way he wrote it. But it's dodging the issue, and it's putting everybody else in peril, because he's going to spend a lot of money, and we're going to keep fighting, and it's just going to get worse. So who does it fall upon within the town to say, you know what, this is a mess? Who's going to decide?
Right, but the board right now cannot make a determination about what may happen in the future, because that's all.
It's obvious what's going to happen. Come on. I mean, okay, never mind. One other thing, thank you, because I think you're very right. If, if this was a farm, you wouldn't be taking your product from a different property completely and sticking it on your residential lot, and then manufacturing your final product and moving it and selling it. That's a whole different concept. This is not a farm. This is a residential lot in a residential neighborhood who's leasing land somewhere else, and whether he's growing tomatoes, or if he's got livestock, it's irrelevant. That's not the farm. The farm that you're talking about is in a residential zone, and he's doing no farming on it. Thank you.
Anybody else want to come up and make a comment?
Megan from 147 Bay Road. Do any of you know what the right-to-farm law is that we're enforcing?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so how many acres?
Doesn't apply.
It does.
Doesn't.
Do you have the book?
For livestock.
And.
It's a right to farm, and, and there's no.
Where's the definition of what livestock and aquaculture are related to each other? Because livestock does feed, that's why there are 5.9 acres allotted, and each bag holds X amount.
They're not livestock.
And they are, if you.
Determination has been made that they're not.
We're here on the appeal.
Sure.
Please.
So.
Do you have a violation?
You're having trouble enforcing.
Do you have a violation that was occurring?
Yes, so the upweller has seed in it. They're farming. So you have something you can enforce. They don't have five acres, and they're farming, and that's what the complaint is. And also, they're.
The complaint was traffic.
They're driving over private land that there's an easement. They do, it is not a road, it's our yard. And I think all of you need to consider all those details, and I'm really disappointed we're here. It never occurred to me we'd get to this point. It's not fair to them, the Tyneals, and it's not fair to us and the other people on Bay Road that so much has been missed. There is no Chapter 91 license for this project. As Mr. Mamory said, the current license on file very explicitly says residential use only. It says no commercial. It's removed seasonally by an approved ramp. You can't tie up anywhere except the front. You cannot tie anything to it, and in your zoning, if you make changes to your dock, there is a whole process that involves, I think, everybody that just went through to get that permitted again, and that has not happened. And there have been changes made to the dock. It has water, it has electricity, and it's turned on right now, as we speak. So there are holes everywhere at every single board that this project has gone to, and it's super frustrating to have to make your neighbors upset to have to stand here and do this, and I hope that you guys could take your magnifying glass out and help everyone out and not waste people's time and money, because aren't permits planning for the future? That's the point of a permit. So we're talking about potential future uses getting more intensive. That's what permitting is for, as far as I know, or we wouldn't need it. So, that's all.
Is there anybody else that'd like to come up in the public?
Ben Bergeron, 108 Old Men Road, North Falmouth. Along with my wife, we volunteer to run the sailing program at McGan's it. And I realize that this is not an abutter, and I realize that my conversation is not about the lot unit, and I understand very much that this is about that. This is also about the safety of kids. We have a program that has 40 sailboats go out tomorrow. We have Wild Harbor, Buzzard Sailing School, Quissette, McGan's it, and Minot, all going out tomorrow to sail in that area. And if there are commercial boats whizzing around, these are not seasoned, well.
This is not a commercial project yet. We're here on an appeal.
Yes.
And, and none of that activity is happening at this address.
There's no commercial boats going in, there's no commercial trucks going up and down the street yet.
As Mr. Crowley also stated, this is, if it is, and is what we think it is, and maybe it's not, that's, maybe it's not. We think that this, a lot of McGan's it, my concern is not about the actual location. My concern is simply for the safety of the kids, and.
So what violation did occur?
Please, just let me say this.
Okay.
If there are those bags, and there might not be, it sounds like Alex is saying, he's sitting right behind me, it sounds like there might not be the bags. If there are not, to me, this is a different conversation. I think a lot of people here probably dropped their swords. If there are the bags that are out there right now, as Mr. Crowley said, this is the one of the most unsafe things that we could possibly do. These kids tip over in the boats, they leave their boats, there's 45 boats on two starting lines tomorrow, we use up that exact area. If there's anything concerning.
What exact area?
The exact area right off of McGan's Public Beach.
This, this hearing is strictly about.
I understand that.
163. We, and nothing else matters to us. I mean, we have blinders on. It's strictly.
This is also.
Sorry, that's the way it works, it's the.
I was not a part, I was not running the program when this started, I was not a homeowner in Falmouth when this started.
Does that program go to 163 Rans Canal to 163 Bay Road? Do you sail through there?
We do not.
So what you're saying has nothing, no, it doesn't apply to what's in front of us now.
Applies to parents, it applies to humans. If.
It doesn't apply to 163 Bay Road.
I understand that.
And, and that's, the building commissioner's determination was strictly about 163 Bay Road. So whatever conjecture outside that area, you're just wasting our time, I'm sorry.
Thank you for your consideration.
Ben, nice to see you again. I, I understand the concerns, the issue of the placement of those floats, it's not a zoning issue. The Board of Selectment and the Army Corps of Engineers licenses and permits the placement of that. I agree, it's unsightly, I certainly didn't want to see that, I would be very frustrated trying to set up a racecourse when I was active in McGan's at Yacht Club, but we have no jurisdiction, and it's really not before us, so I understand the frustration, but it's not, unfortunately, as to the scope of what we have before us tonight, it's just we can't consider it, so, but thank you, thank you for your comments.
I appreciate the opportunity just to voice my concern. I feel like I would not have done my job as the program director at the yacht, how I not voiced that, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Who can stop this?
Come on up, Janet, through you, Madam Chairman. It was a comment from the back from someone.
Come on up.
No.
You have to come up to the microphone.
You do have a letter that was sent today in support, and they asked to have that read into the record.
She wants to read the letter, and we had a letter today that someone asked to be read in. We are writing to express our support for Scott Tyneal to establish an aquaculture farm. It is our understanding that agriculture is a sustainable way to produce food and can support wild fish populations. We have known Scott for decades. Over the year, he has displayed that he's a caring, responsible individual with integrity. We are confident that he will manage the farm in an environmentally sound manner in accordance with all applicable guidelines. Thank you for your consideration. Anybody else want to come up? Did that person in the back want to come up? Do you want to come up? No? Okay. Anybody else? Any other questions for any of the attorneys, or?
Yes. If I can.
Yeah, go for it.
This, the, Mr. Street's letter bothers me, and I'm going to ask Attorney Walsh to come back up to the podium if, if he would. And again, I'm going to read the last paragraph of Mr. Street's letter, as I did earlier. Brian, in the future, it would be greatly appreciated if you slash client can please be specific as to what zoning bylaws you believe the owner of 163 Bay Road Extension is in violation of. When I read that earlier, you then responded, I believe, I think you're, I'm correct, that you provided Mr. Street what with violations that you believed exist, similar to what you've presented here to this board, am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So does that make, because we're trying to decide whether or not Mr. Street is incorrect and to send this back to him. That's the only thing that's before us right now, as much as I agree with everything that's being said. And if we had to make a decision based on this letter and based on what you just told us, I don't know if he took into consideration the violations you pointed out, because he's saying right here, you did not specify the zoning bylaws that 163 Bay Road Extension are in violation of, am I correct?
That's what he says, yes.
But I, I'm not calling anybody, believe me, I'm not calling anybody a liar here, but I don't see this as being a complete review to the board. In my opinion, as one member, I would want to ask Mr. Street, well, did you see these things? Or is this accurate that you didn't see the violations that are being questioned here?
What violations?
What, wait, wait, let me just say this. The attorney for the, for the butters is saying, is saying that Mr. Street did not consider what he gave him for violations, am I correct?
I, I think that's what Mr. Brodsky said, yes.
But you gave him all of that to consider. He's saying here, you were not specific. Were you not specific?
I, I was, I was specific.
So why would he say that you need to be specific?
I, I don't know.
Then why wouldn't this board send this back to Mr. Street saying, would you tell us what you mean by that?
I, I would suggest to you, I'll, I'll share another fact that's not part of the paperwork, but it is part of the record. When I received this, you know, what happens when you receive a letter from the building commissioner, you have 30 days to file an appeal, or you lose the right to file the appeal. I'm not sure that Mr. Street, I can't put myself in his shoes, but I'm not certain that he thought that this was going to be his final word on the matter, because when I went to the zoning office to try to file this, staff looked for a, a section of the letter that Mr. Street puts on there to make it clear that it's his final decision. But I was put in a box because we believe there are violations, and we want to assert our rights to appeal those, and I've already made the case, I won't make it again, but the electricity and the upweller, and now we know there's seed in there, the operation has begun. It hasn't ramped up the way that I think that it will, but it has begun.
I believe there are potentially current violations. I don't know that for sure.
There is a, sorry to interrupt, there is a subsequent letter from the building commissioner, and that's dated July 14, 25.
I don't have that. I'm sorry, I missed it then.
That's more substantive.
And what does that letter say?
He goes into all the details regarding.
I apologize, I did not see that.
Okay.
So he has, so we have no reason to send this back to him.
Well, I think your point, because I have read Mr. Street's subsequent letter, and he talks about the right to farm, and he gets into the bylaws, but I think the point you're making is, we all agree, I think we agree, that there's been electricity installed, an upweller has been installed, that upweller is currently sucking water out of Rans Canal and circulating it around seed. My position is that's enough quantum of activity to find a violation, and so therefore where the, where the building commissioner says, I find that to date there is no violation, we disagree. is no violation, we disagree. We think that there is.
So will you file, if we do not send this back, if we don't send this back to him, will you be filing for another violation?
I have to wait to see what the board does and what the decision, what it says.
Well, the building inspector is saying there's no violation. You're saying there currently is a violation, but when the building inspector went out there, there wasn't a violation.
Right, so when-
We missed the violation.
Whatever the board decides, and I didn't know the room was going to be full of people, I represent a single client here tonight.
Neither did we.
Yeah. Mr. Clower apparently knew. In any event, what happens is when this board makes a decision, then, you know, certain rights flow from that, and either my client might appeal it, Mr. Brodsky's client might appeal it, or maybe we'll accept it and wait for something else to happen. I can't tell you until I see what the decision says.
Except you currently believe there is a violation.
We do. We do. And again, without restating everything, what physically exists in the context of the greater permitting that we know is there, we know why that electric is there. I mentioned this when I stood up, it's not for a hot tub or for lights out of patio or something like that. It's to pump the upweller. It's all, it's all there, it's already there.
And it's permitted.
Do you want to rebut that, sir?
Well, that's, that's the question, isn't it, Mr. Fenneren?
No.
We believe that needs either a permit from you under the wetland section, or it's not allowed.
It's here.
Good evening again, Adam Brodsky for Scott Tynell. I just want to read the operative sentence in Mr. Street's July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five determination. It is my opinion as building commissioner/ zoning enforcement, under MGL Chapter Forty-Eight, Section Three, the agricultural exemption, and Section one seven four dash one of the Town of Falmouth E-code, the right to farm, whether on land or water body, is a by right use. That was the building commissioner's determination from which there's an appeal. That's the issue before this board, and that was the alleged violation, as I mentioned. The assertion is that the use of this property for agricultural violates your zoning code, and the building commissioner has determined it's a by right use. Thank you.
Any other questions up here?
But our, our by right use says if it's five acres.
Pardon me? How do you hear that?
It says, our by right use in the zoning bylaws says five acres in the use table.
If livestock.
Right, but you can't make a discern-
That's for livestock. That's where, that's where the whole thing hitches.
Right.
And I mean-
But if you're going to consider aquaculture a subset of agriculture, you can't just pick and choose what animal, what plant you want to be. It's either all in the bucket or out of the bucket.
I think you covered that quite-
I'm just, that's all, I'm saying, you can't pick and choose.
No, well, you certainly can.
I understand that-
You certainly can, because-
The difference between a clam and a cow.
Livestock requires room to graze, acreage.
But the law doesn't say them, so-
I mean, you can't raise, you know, fifty cows on a, on a five acre thing either. I mean, but these things aren't using-
Oysters on five acres.
They're not livestock.
Excuse me?
Animal livestock.
Quiet, geez. Any other questions up here? Everybody all set?
I'm all set. I think we should motion to close.
Close?
Yeah, then we get a vote.
Well, one of the things we might discuss, and we might want to discuss and frame the issue. Yeah, let's discuss this. We can close and then discuss. We don't have to necessarily vote. We could, how we want to do that, or have a decision drafted for our consideration. It's very complicated.
It is.
And it's, unfortunately, this may wind up in litigation, so it's imperative that we do the best we can.
Well, there's a motion to close.
I would second that.
Motion to close in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. All right.
And I would move that we consider asking the zoning administrator to draft a decision. First of all, we have to poll the board to decide if we're inclined to affirm the decision of the board, or overturn the decision of the building commissioner, or overturn the decision of the building commissioner. And then ask the zoning administrator to draft an appropriate decision for our review, and comment, and vote at a later meeting.
Sounds good. I'm upholding.
Does anybody really have anything they can hang their hat on here? I don't think so. I mean, where has he aired?
We've heard a lot of things that are very complicated, and I think it just makes-
Yeah, I mean-
I appreciate what you're saying, Mark. I really do.
I mean, we got to, there's so much supposition and conjecture.
But this is complicated.
I mean, we have to have something we can nail down, and I don't, I don't see that anybody's come close to overturning any decision they made. And it's not only one, it was the previous building commissioner as well. And I mean, through, through home rule petition, this town is a, is a right to farm town.
A building commissioner is always right?
No. No, nobody's always right.
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 But give me something to hang my hat on. I mean, again, I'm not saying that I'm really involved. I just-
I agree with Mr. Duffy that we have, this has to be looked at more carefully, and there has to be a draft decision. I, I'm not voting tonight, but I see a real problem here, and I see a future problem. And we've got to figure out how we as a board, given the limitations we have, and we're very limited, how we deal with this. And I agree with Mr. Duffy, this has to be looked at very, very carefully. It's going to affect a lot of people, so.
So it'll be affirmative? I mean, to uphold?
Well, you have to poll the board. It's not a vote, it's just a poll.
I certainly would be to uphold the right for Falmouth to be a right farm community. I mean-
It's a-
A point of, point of interest, Madam Chair, what are we polling, what is the polling? To ask Noreen to do us a draft.
Thank you. But she has to know how we're going to vote.
Right. So we have two upholds.
All right. I support the building commissioner's statement.
I'll vote to affirm.
So it's four so far.
You got it, you got it. If it's passed, I'd like town council to weigh in on this, as to the interpretation.
Definitely.
Before I commit to anything, the, this is complicated. I, this is, we're not going to be the final arbiter of this issue.
I feel awful for the Butters and-
This is going to end up one way or the other in front of, I'm guessing, a Superior Court judge, or, yeah, Superior Court judge. I think a lot of the issues that have been raised by a Butters, I think they may have legit zoning issue, or, excuse me, not zoning, enforcement issues, but it needs to go to licensing authority for the waterways or other issues. But as to zoning at this point, I'd like to see town council weigh in on the, whatever the decision is, the draft is.
So we're good with that?
So then the zoning administrator will draft a decision affirming the building commissioner, that we can review and consider and change if we want to.
Correct. That's when we, had an eye on that?
Aye.
All right, so I would propose that we continue this to August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five to review and discuss and potentially vote a draft.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you for everybody's-
So August twenty-one, if you're interested, we'll have a decision by then?
The board should officially announce.
August twenty-one, six p.m.
That you're going to continue this case?
We are continuing it till August twenty-one at six p.m. Yeah, sorry.
Will there be a meeting?
There will not be one tonight. She's going to grab us one, and we're going to go over it.
And you want to explain that the hearing's closed, so that there's no more testimony?
Yes, the hearing is closed, that's true. So no emails, no, no testimony from anybody, from anybody.
Two-minute recess, Madam Chair?
Yeah. Five-minute recess.
This is application forty-three of the year two thousand twenty-five, submitted by the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution. They've applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section two forty-seven point three C of the zoning bylaw to replace the existing dock, removal of structure, and construction of a new building, and to allow alteration of the land form within a flood zone. Property is located at eighty-six Water Street in Woods Hole. The zoning is public use. The, it isn't, of course, a flood zone. It's in a V, part of it's in a V-zone, AE elevation twelve. There are no previous decisions of the Board of Appeals on record. The existing building is one hundred and eight thousand square feet, the proposed building will be seventy-five thousand square feet. The lot is one hundred twenty-seven, two hundred and twenty-four square feet. That comes out to two point eight acres, in a zoning district which currently requires forty-five thousand square feet. There's no mention in the application of the street frontage, but a hundred feet is required, and it sure looks like they have that. Woods Hole, Water Street is a public right-of-way in Woods Hole. Lot coverage by structure exists at thirty-three percent. It will be reduced to twenty-one percent now. In a public use district, the lot coverage by structure is forty percent. Lot coverage by structure, parking, and paving, which in this district is seventy percent, will be at ninety, it's currently at ninety-two, so it's non-conforming, and it will remain non-conforming, but it will be ninety-one, a one percent improvement. The setbacks are not really relevant here, because we're not dealing with non-conformities. The height of the proposed, of the existing structure is seventy-two point three feet. The height of the proposed structure is forty feet. Engineering has given us a referral for a street permit and no stormwater runoff during construction. Board of Health informs us that the property is on the town sewer. The Conservation Commission issued an order of condition and a later, an amended order of condition approving the project. The water department has no comment at this time, they may later. The planning board did a site plan review and a special permit in November of two thousand twenty-four. Building commissioner has no comment, the fire department has no comment. There were no letters in either support or in opposition. Now, the Conservation Commission order of condition was dated February two thousand twenty-two. The amendment was dated August two thousand twenty-four. The planning board's site plan review and special permit was dated November twenty-two, or twenty twenty-two, and it was later modified in November of two thousand twenty-four. The, I have a note here that the new building will be out of the existing velocity zone, and that's it for time.
Thanks. Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Nice to have met many of you. My name is Rob Munir. I'm the Vice President for Marine Facilities and Operations at the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution. Tonight, the topic is what we call seawater, the Complex for Waterfront Access to Exploration and Research, and it's essentially about the redevelopment of our waterfront. So we're before you all tonight to talk about a special permit, and I do thank you, for those of you that were able to make it out the other night and take the walk about it, I really appreciate the interest in the project. Introduce my team here. Jeff Abramson, Eliza Cox, Jack Vicaro, and Mike Barrett. You'll hear from all of them, except for Mike. Mike was here in case I fainted for some reason or something like that, but he's actually the project manager, so it really-
And an EMT.
So I'm going to give a few introductory remarks, a little bit about who we, and a little bit about the context of the project, and then I'm going to hand it off to Eliza. She's going to talk specifically about this particular special permit that we're seeking. And then, I believe, hand it off to Jeff, who will talk more specifically about the details of the project that are relevant to the special permit. And then we'll be open for questions. So that is the agenda that I just outlined. So a little bit about us, I'm pretty sure you know us reasonably well, but a few things. We're a research institution. Our focus is oceanography, ocean engineering, marine operations, education. We're a private independent entity, so a lot of our funding comes from the federal government, but we are a private nonprofit. We have about twelve hundred employees and three hundred affiliates, so about a population of fifteen hundred. And affiliates include our PhD program students, our post-docs, interns, all the folks that aren't employees but are really an important part of our population. We do about three hundred and fifty million a year in business, and we're the second largest employer on the Cape, other than the hospital system. NSF is our primary source of funds. We get funding through competitively awarded grants, so we have about six or seven hundred grants going at any given time in all manners, different disciplines.
What does NSF stand for?
NSF stands for the National Science Foundation. Sorry for that. We are in an interesting time in our world, because we're eighty percent federal funded, and our federal government is a little bit unpredictable right now, but we're a robust organization, and we are going to have to manage our way through it like we have other challenges in the past. We have a lot of economic impacts locally, focused specifically on the dock and the waterfront. We do about fifty million a year of business through operation of ships and developing and testing underwater robots and all manner of ways of access to the sea. This is a, an overview of the site, and for those of you that walked about it, you'll recognize it. It's really what we call the Island Marine Facility, so that's the name it's been since it was built in the late sixties. And it focuses on this triangular-shaped dock, which has two large berths for large ships. Shown there on the left side, in the western berth, is the research vessel Neil Armstrong, which is one of two large vessels that we operate on behalf of the U.S. academic research fleet. A couple of key points here to see, we have some features that make the facility itself a research platform, so not just a host for research vessels. Test well shown in the middle, that's an important feature that allows us to put things in the water, to test sensors, underwater vehicles, we conduct diving operations from there. It's a real important feature. We have a small boat slip on the right. Small boats are an important part of what we do. A lot of, we don't always need a large research vessel to get out and do our work. Then there's the buildings that are shown there. Those are shops and research labs that are used to develop these tools, to provide the sort of preliminary prototyping, which then, in some manner, gets put in the ocean, either on a ship, goes out to sea, gets put right over the side at the dock right here. In some cases, we have underwater robots that actually get deployed from the waterfront here, go out and do a mission, and come back to this waterfront. Just a little bit more orientation, then I'll hand it off. The buildings, the Island building is, is sort of the prominent one that's there in the foreground with the white roof. And then in the back, there's a connector building that is called the Smith Connector that goes to the brick building, which is on Water Street. And if you think of it as an accumulation of New England farmhouses over the last ninety years, it's suboptimal in its current orientation, so it really is ripe for being upgraded to really carry us through the rest of the century. So why do we need a new waterfront? Well, it's a fifty-six-year-old facility. It had a fifteen-year, fifty-year design life. The facility is deteriorating. The photograph in the upper right shows a large investment in some repairs we had to make. We're spending about a million dollars a year right now in repairs, and that number's going to go up. We're susceptible to sea level rise. We're about six and a half feet off the mean watermark, and so we know that in due course, we're going to be having to address that as an issue. And the dock and the whole facility really doesn't support what we see the future of oceanography being, so it's, it's suboptimal in the fact that it's really sort of something that was done fifteen, sixty years ago, and the way things are done, and we anticipate them being done in the future, is going to be different. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Lisa.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, my name is Eliza Cox. I'm an attorney at Latanzi Spalding in Leandreth, and very pleased to be here this evening. I have been working on this project for about the last five years, so we are actually, this is our last permitting stop, which is pretty remarkable, and we're very, very pleased to be here this evening. Before I turn the podium over to Jeff, I just wanted to take a moment and orient the board as to why we're here this evening. As was indicated in the public hearing notice, HUI is seeking a special permit pursuant to Section two forty-seven point three C of the zoning bylaw to replace the existing section two forty-seven point three, which is the floodplain overlay district here in the town. The requirement for this special permit is triggered by the property's location within two FEMA flood zones, which are referenced on the screen, were also indicated in the hearing notice, and also because the project consists of an alteration of a landform and the construction, or actually here, the reconstruction of non-residential structures within the flood zone. Those are the triggers under the zoning bylaw. The bylaw, as I know you all are very familiar with, also has a whole list of requirements that have to be met when developing in a floodplain, and this project does meet all of those requirements. Those are set forth in the memorandum that we included with the application, and you'll hear from Jeff as to the design features that comply with those requirements as well. As, although the board's this evening purview is limited to the special permit for development within the floodplain, this project, as I mentioned, has been on a five-year permitting path via many, many permitting authorities who've had extensive jurisdiction over all different aspects of the project. On the screen before you right now is our permitting slide, and as you can see, we've received federal permitting for this project. At the state level, we've completed the MEPA permitting, the DEP permitting, both waterways in terms of the Chapter ninety-one licenses, which have been issued, as well as a modification of the existing Chapter ninety-one license that already existed for the dock. We've received our water quality certification from the state. At the town level, as was indicated previously, we have gone through the Conservation Commission process, which was a very rigorous process before Falmouth. The Conservation Commission actually hired a peer review, which also reviewed our project, and that was approved via an order of conditions. The Conservation Commission also has standards for development within a floodplain, which was also part of the review and approval of the existing order of conditions that we have for the project. At the planning board, we have gone through a site plan review and also several special permits. As this is an exempt use under the Dover Amendment, the planning board can authorize and did authorize certain dimensional non-conformities via that special permit process. Earlier this month, on July fourteenth, we were before the Select Board for a wetlands special permit under the zoning bylaw, and that was voted on and approved. We haven't had the decision yet, but I have seen a draft of it, just came out. So that was approved earlier this month. And then, last, we're here tonight. This is the last permit for this project, and we're looking forward to our discussion this evening. I'm going to come up at the very end to kind of walk through compliance with the sections of the bylaw, but right now, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff to walk you through the project.
Thank you.
Great. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeff Abramson. I'm an architect with KIA. We're based out of Boston. Nice to come down here this evening. So I'll give a brief overview of the project. And really, Rob touched on some of the reasons why the dock needed to be rebuilt, but one of the reasons that there's also a building being constructed here is that the existing Island building that many of you saw was constructed in the nineteen seventies, half on land and half on the existing dock, which is indicated in blue on this image. So whoever had the foresight of locating the building here, we're now having to deal with, right? And because the dock needs to replace, there's now a building project as well. This slide here indicates the regulatory constraints on the existing site. So what you're seeing here in the kind of the salmon color is indication of the plotted VE zone, so this is the velocity zone up at elevation fifteen. And then directly adjacent to that is the twenty-five-foot VE setback, and that's a town overlay on top of this. And then inboard of that, you see AE twelve, so anything that's not in the salmon color is AE twelve, so elevation twelve. As Eliza mentioned, the Chapter ninety-one license, you can see the historic shoreline there in green. And then up against Water Street, you see the front yard setback, of which the existing Bigelow and Smith buildings are currently in violation of. So from a regulatory standpoint, a very complex site with lots of different overlays on it. This is what you're seeing is the proposed ultimate vision for the project, and I'll click back and forth to show you the differences here. So as Rob mentioned, there's a new pile-supported dock, which is largely within the same footprint as the previous dock. There is a new building itself here in the center, which is in blue. And a really important note for this group here is that the footprint of the new building not only stays out of the VE zone, it also stays out of the presumptive twenty-five-foot setback off of that. So the buil, the building footprint is entirely within the AE twelve zone. In addition to that, the project will have a number of landscape elements involved with it, a new landscape along Water Street in the ultimate vision, as well as some development of some landscape directly behind the community and firehouse building. This is necessary because today, on site, right where the AE twelve is, you might have noticed, there is a little bit of green space, a little bit of kind of pervious on a very impervious site, and as part of the order of conditions with the Conservation Commission, there's ingredients to kind of replicate that amount of pervious space on the site. There's a slight indication of phase one, phase two as part of this project. When we went in front of the, the planning board earlier this year, we explained potentially different ways that the building could be phased, and as Rob mentioned, funding is a big driver for this, not knowing exactly what the funding sources are. The building itself is being designed in a way that it can be built in two phases. But ultimately, what we're here today is to show the full project vision of what will occur on site. Because the diagrams may be not easily understood, this is an elevated shot. You're looking back in the opposite direction on the site with Water Street in your foreground. You can see an overlay of the bulkhead in the pile-supported dock. You can see how that bulkhead goes directly through the Island building and the new, what the new building itself, as it stands completely landward of that. So really, when we talk about resiliency, and Rob mentioned this as well, the regulations require, but in addition to that, for the purpose of designing this project, the Woods Hole really wanted to understand what the potential risks were over the next hundred years. If you're looking at a hundred-year building, what are the risks to sea level rise? If you're investing this much money in a building, you want it to last and be adaptable for the future. So not only did kind of internal subject matter experts from Woods Hole, but also external subject matter experts from Moffett and Nickle and Engineering Group and Woods Hole Group, who's also here in the community, looking at both the near-term twenty-five, twenty-fifty sea level rise projections and then the long-term twenty-one-hundred sea level rise projections. So what is built into this project is the adaptability of both the dock and the building to be modified in the future in order to adapt to sea level rise. So the dock, which will start at roughly two and a half feet above where it exists today, the new dock that we built at that, and the new building, in the future, both the building and the dock could raise further as the entire kind of community in near vicinity adapts to sea level rise as well. So as Eliza mentioned, as we've been designing the building, we're really looking at a number of regulations, and it starts at the federal level with FEMA and the National Flood Insurance Program. So they have a number of different TBS or technical bulletins. There's a National Flood Insurance Manual and also directives in terms of dry floodproofing and the like. This is really crucial to the Woods Hole and Falmouth community because your insurance rating is dependent on buildings being designed in a way that are within these regulations. And we've been working, again, with federal authorities to ensure that, that we comply for building, again, in the AE zone. If we're in the velocity zone, it's much more significant. At the state level, we have the new tenth edition of the Building Code, which, again, has certain requirements associated with building in flood zones. Our building would be determined as a flood design Class II, which means by the state Building Code, we need to floodproof or raise the building up to the base flood elevation, which is twelve, plus one foot. So that gets us to elevation thirteen, that's kind of our base working platform. However, at the local level, again, the Falmouth has wetland regulations that say in addition to all of that, you need to consider a hundred years of sea level rise on top of that, which, again, we determine to be about one, an additional one foot. So really, the most stringent requirement of all of these from the federal, state and local is really your wetlands regulations, which is the determining factor that the building is going to be floodproofed up to an elevation fourteen, so two feet above the base flood elevation, and I'll share that in a minute. And again, today, we're here about the zoning bylaw, which says the lowest floor of any new substantially improved non-residential structure should be elevated to the base flood elevation or floodproof. And we'll show you in a minute that we're doing both. We're floodproofing and we're lifting the elevation. All right. Just some, some orientation here. This is a section that's cut right through the middle of Water Street with Eel Pond on the right and the harbor on the left, and you can see where that AE twelve is relative to the existing buildings there, so about halfway through the first floor of the buildings that exist on Water Street and HOE's existing buildings that are on the site. So Water Street's elevation is about six point seven one, and the dock is anywhere between six and a half and seven feet, as Rob mentioned. And really, what we'll be looking to do in the future, in the near term, the existing dock at six and a half, the proposed dock will raise up to nine. And what that'll mean is, as part of the site work, the site will have to, the topography will have to raise up to get to the dock and then come back down. The building itself will be also at about elevation nine, but the dock in the future has the ability to be raised up to elevation ten and a half, again, for that long-term viability. This would be a section of the building itself, so again, you can see, again, in the ultimate vision. I would know in terms of some of the, the criteria or description of the site, the tallest building on the site is the cupola of Bigelow and it will remain the cupola of Bigelow. So you can see that the new proposed building will be constructed within the existing or proposed or allowable height on the site. So want to talk a little bit about how the building will comply with the floodproofing requirements. So what you're seeing on the right is if you kind of took the building and chopped it just above elevation fourteen. And what you'll see is a combination of two things. One is a waterproof knee wall around the perimeter of spaces that are dock-dependent. So as Rob mentioned, all throughout the day, various robots will be brought in and out of the high bays. There's folks who are part of the dive program. They're getting in and out of the building all day long, so those kind of dock-dependent spaces are down at elevation nine and a half with this waterproof knee wall, so the floodproofing up to elevation fourteen. The remainder of the building for the non-dependent usage and any kind of mechanical infrastructure for the building is all elevated up at elevation fourteen. And then any openings associated with that floodproofed area will be protected through a deployable flood barrier system. And this system is compliant with FEMA, it's compliant with AEC twenty-four, which is the state code, and U.S. Army Corps and FM Global, which is the property insurer. So these images are actually my office in downtown Boston, right by the seaport, in which they get deployed whenever there's a large storm of that. And there are certain criteria within the state code that's about the operation of this for HOE in the future, like they need to be stored in a place that can be deployed easily, and this is about protecting the building and the occupants in it. So lastly, just want to kind of show graphic representation. Again, this is looking at the Smith Building, so those of you who are familiar, we're looking at cross-section Water Street, looking out towards the water. And again, overlay, do you see where the AE twelve zone is, the flood zone on the Smith Building? So you can really see how susceptible the, the old buildings are on, down in this portion of town. And then here's a rend, artist rendition of the, the new building, and what you're seeing in red on the bottom there is that kind of waterproof knee wall. Again, the entrance to the building will be down at grade level, but you'll immediately walk in the front door and go upstairs or elevators to get up to the first floor itself. And I'll just end on this table here to just reiterate what maybe Eliza said earlier. In terms of all the proposed conditions versus the existing conditions, in terms of building footprint with the VE zone, building footprint within twenty-five feet of the VE zone, the total footprint, they're all reductions as a result of this project. So all the impacts will be reduced as a, as part of this. When you do see that the proposed project has square footage within the V, the VE zone or the twenty-five-foot setback, that's just, it's Bigelow. Bigelow sits there, it's not going to change, so it's not the actual project. So I think with that, I'll just pass it back to Eliza to finish.
Thank you. This is our last slide for the evening, and I just wanted to hit on some of the requirements of the floodplain bylaw and show compliance. So as Jeff mentioned previously and as you saw on the slides, the lowest floor of the new building is elevated to or above the base flood elevation, or for those portions of the building that are functionally dependent to the dock elevation, those are floodproofed to or above the base flood elevation. That's one of your requirements. The zoning bylaw requires certification of floodproofing. That can be conditioned, that will be provided. The new waterfront building that you saw in blue on an earlier slide, as Jeff mentioned, is entirely outside of the velocity zone, another one of your requirements. This project does not alter sand dunes within a velocity zone. That's also in the, the overlay. The project does not result in increased flood heights or additional threats to public safety. It's actually less building on the site that is more compliant with flood requirements. The project does not alter drainage or runoff to the detriment of other landowners to the town, and in fact, it represents an improvement with new stormwater infrastructure being installed, something that was also very carefully reviewed by the Conservation Commission. And finally, consistent with your bylaw, we submit that the granting of this relief does not conflict with existing bylaws, and in fact, we've received all of the other permits that we showed you, including ones from the Conservation Commission and from the Board, the Select Board. So I think that's going to conclude our presentation this evening. Our team is here if you have any questions of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead, Tony.
I, you're a tremendous source of pride for this community. I mean, I, I mean, it's wonderful to have you folks here. I just wanted to ask a quick question. Talked about the topography will have to rise to adapt. How do you increase the site, the street level?
So we have an initiative with our neighbors, Marine Biological Lab and Noah Marine Fisheries, and the town is actually what I would consider a partner in this, called Resilient Woods Hole. And the idea is that we can't do this project over the long haul in isolation. We need to have our neighbors to be considering these types of things, and we need the town to consider it. And we've also used this as a platform to engage the local communities, the local residents by virtue of us sharing with them everything we've learned in this process about where we think the inundation is going to take place, how bad it's going to be over what spans of time, and what types of solutions people might consider. So that's our, that's our solution to your question, that we, we really need to have, you know, a high tide raises all boats. We really need to do that with, from a community perspective to be successful here.
Love to see all that happen. It'd be wonderful, really would. Under two forty-seven, three C, we have to, the special permit findings that Special Perpetual shall be issued with regard to two A and B in this case, and you certainly have covered all of that. We have to, the Zoning Board of Appeals shall duly consider any recommendations by the Conservation Commission. You've covered all of that. So on to seven point three C. I, from my one perspective, I think you've covered everything that needs to be covered. Thank you. Appreciate that.
The hour is late. I'm not going to ask anything and possibly snatch defeat from the jaws of victory. Thank you. Very thorough presentation. Thank you, and thank you for patience this evening.
Of course.
Thank you. From all set to Frank.
I just have a little detail I just want to clear up. One of the findings we have to make in the special permit is the relevance of the ACEC. Is, is there one applicable here or is that not available?
No, we're not in an ACEC.
Thank you.
Great project, great presentation.
Great project, great presentation. I wish it didn't take you five years to get here. Maybe you would have got your financing and been well on your way, but I appreciate everything you do for the community also. Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
I really have nothing. $150 million, that's, good luck to you and Red Sox getting that.
Phasing.
That's only Phase 1, isn't it?
That's the short answer.
I got enough pieces.
So we're all set up here, everybody?
Guess we're not a lot of public that are even asked.
No way to come.
Richard, come on up.
Oh, there you go.
Thank you. Richard Johnson, I'm a landscape architect. From the site plan, it appeared as if there would be a certain amount of amenities along Water Street, benches, planting beds, et cetera. And I was curious about whether, in the event of needing to secure the building, would those amenities be part of the public streetscape or would they be within the Hui secure perimeter?
Good question. Who wants to tackle?
So you can eat your lunch during the hurricane?
Sorry if I'm understanding your question correctly. So in the ultimate project vision, the building will be set back further from the street so it doesn't, no longer violates the front yard setback. So the intention for that area in the front of the building, or at least the vision from a landscape standpoint, is that there's some planted zones in order to deal with stormwater as part of the overall management plan. There'd be pervious pavement as well to deal with that, some seating areas so students and groups could congregate in that area. Those parts and pieces, I would assume, are like built-in granite elements that would stay there in perpetuity. There could likely be cafe seating out there too, which would have to be removed in the event of a flood or the like. We're thinking that lower zone of the building where, one of the big challenges we have is if we're building up to 14, that's almost an entire floor of just nothing. It's a reinforced wall. So our thought there was that's a perfect opportunity to have like a didactic area where built into that wall, different elements of the Hui that they're working on could be, you know, displayed there as well as part of the building so that too would be built into the construction. Did that answer your question or? Yeah, go ahead.
Just to be a little more specific, if you had to imagine a secure fence, would it be at the back of the sidewalk or would it be the building wall?
Yeah. Here, I'll bring up the site plan again.
Yeah.
So if you look at the site right now, the vision is that the secure area is going to actually take place in this vicinity right here.
You can see the curb check.
So the, everything to the right of that is essentially open to the public. And in fact, the green space that Jeff mentioned, which is us sort of relocating the green space we have, is sort of visualized to potentially be a public space. So this would be where the secure aspect would be. The other entrance would be now through the building so that the entrance between Bigelow and Smith would actually not be open the way it is now because it really doesn't serve a good purpose for it right now. So that's the vision.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, you can see the intention here, Rob knows a lot more about this, but when the ships are in, because they're essentially, right, government navy vessels, the site essentially needs to be restricted. So the intention is that restriction would happen here in here. And there's an existing gate up against the existing building, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Motion to close?
Second.
We have a motion to close. Anybody have any further questions before we close? You guys are all set presentation-wise?
Yeah.
Richard, you're all set? Okay. Motion to close in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none.
Take a motion to approve with conditions.
Second.
To approve of the conditions. Okay, Frank.
So we have property belonging to the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution at 86 Water Street in Woods Hole. It's a public use district. They've applied for a special permit under zoning bylaw Section 247.3C to replace existing dock, construct a new building, and the permit is for the alteration of land form in a flood zone. The flood zone applies. There are no special decisions or no previous decisions of the Zoning Board of Appeals applicable to this property. The property is both landward, land form and dock. Total square footage is 1,224 square feet, excuse me, 127,224 square feet. That's 2.8 acres in a zoning district requiring 45, so that's no problem. The street frontage is okay. Water Street is a public right-of-way. The lock coverage by structure is presently within limits of the zoning bylaw and will remain within limits. The lock coverage by structure parking and paving currently exceeds the 70% allowed by the zoning bylaw and will remain in excess of the 70%. Setbacks of the structures is not an issue right now. The height of the building, the existing height is 72.3 feet. That's on the Bigelow building, which will remain. The new building will be 40 feet high. We've had engineering, border health referrals, which I previously read. There is a special, excuse me, a Conservation Commission Order of Condition dated in February of 2022. It was amended in August of 2024. The Planning Board has issued a site plan review and special permit in November of 2022. It was modified again in November of 2024. The new building will be outside of the V zone. Other additional findings, the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution has been in operation at this location for approximately 95 years. It's a scientific research institution. It conducts scientific research and related activities. It is very important to the economy of the town of Falmouth. It is the second-largest employer on Cape Cod. Great Harbor, which is the body of water adjacent, is an important commercial harbor with deep water, able to accommodate deep water vessels. It is suitable for use by large vessels and supporting activity. It is home port for the 238-foot RV Neil Armstrong and the 273-foot RV Atlantis II and also other vessels. The existing dock and structures to be replaced are 56 years old. They were built originally with a 50-year useful life, and they need to be replaced. The redevelopment will allow for many more years of continuous operation at this location. The Board of Selectmen issued a special permit under the wetlands provision of the zoning bylaw in June, excuse me, in July of 2025, which has been drafted, but we haven't seen the final copy. Under Section 247.3A, it applies to alteration of land forms. The zoning bylaw applies to the alteration of land forms. Section 240-3, the definition says that an alteration of land form is human-made changes to the existing character of the land incidental to the construction of a structure. Under Section 247.3B, which is where we must make findings with respect to building permit, the relevant portions, the lowest floor of a new and substantially improved non-residential structure shall be elevated to or above the base flood elevation level to be floodproofed. The new building will be elevated to elevation 14, which is 2 feet above the base flood elevation, and anything else will be floodproofed to elevation 14. The work will be certified by a professional engineer or architect for floodproofing measures that are required. Storage of fuel, toxic or hazardous materials within the base floodplain shall be floodproofed. The proposal will provide that all such, the storage of all such materials will be floodproofed as required. New construction within the V zone shall be located landward of the reach of mean high tide. The new building will be more than 25 feet away from the edge of all V zones on the The use of the fill for structural support for buildings within the V zone is prohibited. There will be no fill for structural support within the V zone. And for a special permit, under Section 247.3C2, the board finds that the granting of the special permit will not result in increased flood height, additional threats to public safety, extraordinary public expense, or conflict with existing bylaws. The board also finds that the relief may be granted in the minimum necessary, considering the flood hazard existing.
Do I have one? The proposed improvements will reduce or mitigate damage during any coastal storm and improve the town's overall stated goal of improving coastal resiliency.
Conditions. Her plans.
Work hours.
Work hours.
Madam Chair, can we ask what the work hours are? I want to make sure that...
I just put it away. 7 to 7, Monday through Friday, 8 to 4 Saturdays?
Yep.
And no Sundays and no town holidays.
Okay, thank you.
And then a condition with traffic, maybe, for them to work with the police?
Work with the town if traffic becomes an issue, only Woods Hole gets tight. Just, I don't want to micromanage, just...
Right.
If I could, Madam Chair, through you, as part of the site plan special permit decision from the Planning Board, we have to get a road opening permit. I didn't re-read those regulations. There are traffic measures that are associated with that, so I think it's covered by...
For site plan review.
Site plan review.
I don't want to micromanage.
Yeah, that's perfect. Thank you. Any other conditions you can think of, Noreen, or anyone else up here?
No.
I think we're good, right?
Yeah.
You guys all set?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience, too, and thank you.
Thanks a lot.
All right, good job, Frank. That was a lot of findings, Jesus. All right, minutes. Have we done any minutes? Tableau?
Okay.
Reorg.
Madam Chairman, subject to any discussion, I'll make a motion that the existing officers of the board remain in place for the coming year.
I'll second that for sure.
Everybody okay with that? Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
For a discussion? Let's go home. That's my discussion. For updates. And our next meeting is August 14th at 6:00 PM. Mark?
Hey, motion to adjourn.
I need a second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. What do you take?